Hi, good evening, welcome to the planning board meeting of Monday, July eighth. And we are, I will start by entertaining a motion to open the continued public hearings for Buckland Street and Lennox Street, stormwater permit, and the petition to construct a paper street.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, so just on process point, Mr. Atwell is not going to be here tonight, but he could not vote on this hearing anyway, and unfortunately, Mr. Derso is not going to be here, and missing this one means that he could not watch the previous one and this one, so he is no longer a voter. So our voters are Mary, Dave, myself, Gary, Amy, and Deb. Robert's new to the board. And I think you need, you need six for the stormwater? No, five. And how about the paper street? Five? Five, okay, five for each, okay. Good. Thanks, Ruby. Okay, so we had talked last time about jumping in on the waiver request. Did you want to start us off somehow?
Sure. Lou Patrozi for Wall Street Development Corp. John was nice enough to send me an email asking for an updated list of waivers that we were requesting over and above what was originally proposed, and I did submit a revised list of waivers that were, has been revised based on the conversations that we've had with the planning board and the preferences that the board had relative to certain items, and based on our revisions of the plan over the last eight to 10 months. So essentially, the list of waivers, I'll go through them just quickly.
So what I think, just from a process point, I'm going to have you go over them one at a time, not necessarily so quickly, we're going to bang through them and get questions and get our engineer and make decisions for you, okay?
Okay, great, thank you. So the first waiver, just out of section 5.4, was environmental analysis, that was, seems to be required, so we asked for a waiver on that since we are in front of the Conservation Commission with the whole project, and the no, and traffic impact report.
So we're going to stop on the environmental analysis. Your position is that you don't need the environmental analysis for the, this is for the road construction, just to be clear.
Yes, yes.
And I'm going to go ahead and ask our engineer who's here if he has an opinion on the environmental analysis.
So Phil Paradas at Data Group.
Thank you.
I don't know that the road in particular has a significant impact, other than the issues we're discussing, wetlands, stormwater management, and those items.
So they would be, in your opinion, they would be captured in the stormwater permit process?
Right, yeah.
And then the Concom review?
Right.
Thank you. Anybody around the table have questions on this?
Phil, you can probably stay there.
I'll start with you, Deb.
I'll pass the moment.
Okay. You may participate.
Okay.
No?
No, no issues.
So Deb, last chance.
So we're waiting for Concom to make its final approval, so you're asking for us to make a wait, I'm just trying to figure out process?
No, so Concom, correct me if I'm wrong, Concom is not weighing in on this paper street petition, it is weighing in on the stormwater.
Well, no, they're weighing in on those, the construction of Buckland Street as well, but the reason why they have not taken this up in full is because we told them we're in front of the planning board, waiting for the final plan to be agreed to, and then they would, then we would submit to them, so they would vote on the same plan that we have in front of the planning board. So they are, they are, have an open public hearing, and I guess it would be before the stormwater, because that's the one item that is within their jurisdiction, the hundred-foot buffer zone, the rest of the roadway is outside their jurisdiction.
So did you submit something to them for the roadway?
Yes, yes.
And when are they going to hear that?
Well, we're going back there tomorrow night.
So, so yeah, I, and I don't know which is the right order to go in, but I'd be in favor of waiting to see what Concom has, because there were some questions as to the drainage onto other properties, and not being an expert in that matter, I'd like to make sure with them that everything is, is together, put together well. That's, that would be my only...
I totally understand that. I'm going to go ahead and entertain a motion on granting the waiver for the environmental analysis, which would mean there would be no environmental analysis required by this board?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any for, any comments?
Would we add a condition that Concom, this will be subject to Concom review?
I definitely think that our overall approval would, would, that would be my preference.
That's a nice way to put it, yeah. Okay. That's fine.
So with a condition that any, any approval has as a condition, Concom's successful...
Approval or interpretation, or what's that?
All those in favor of granting this waiver signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Traffic impact report, go ahead.
Yes, Madam Chairman, we felt that since this proposal, Buckland Street would only be able to service four residential dwellings at the most, that we didn't think that that was a significant impact to the access and egress from Buckland Street onto Pleasant Street. It was adequate site distance in either direction, and so we asked for a waiver on the traffic report.
Do you have any thoughts on that at all? Anybody have any questions, or start at the other end, start with Mary this time.
No, I don't think, I think, you know, four houses does not add a huge amount, it certainly is a busy street that it would be going on to, but I don't think four houses is significant enough.
Yeah. How about you, David?
Robert? Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't think four houses is going to be the straw that broke the camel's back.
Mary? Amy?
I agree, four houses is small.
Is, in traffic, in traffic impact reports, is there anything that talks about hours of construction coming in, because there are neighbors that could be interrupted? I know the traffic reports are significantly for a larger scope, but where would something like that go?
So in my estimation, it would be just our overall construction bylaws, but...
Yeah, so that wouldn't be a traffic impact study, that might be in an operation and maintenance plan, construction management plan, something like that.
Yeah, so that would be my suggestion, is some interpretation of how we can guide them to be not disruptive to the neighborhood.
I'm going to put a note over here, just O and M plan for construction issues, which it will be included, but we can make sure, okay, Deb?
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve waiving the completion of the traffic impact report.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Go ahead.
The next waiver requested was section 8.2.1.1G, which deals with property lines at street intersections to be rounded or cut back to provide for curb line radius not less than fifteen feet. Quite honestly, I'm not familiar with that particular waiver, where it intersects on Pleasant Street, but we thought that, given its location, that we might include that waiver going forward.
I imagine that it also is the acts, emergency access piece on Maple Street Extension as well.
Right.
So you wouldn't have that on there either.
Exactly.
So Phil, what is that exactly for? Is that the vehicles, the emergency vehicles, or?
So, so, yeah, typically you want to provide a right, it's the property lines, the right-of-way lines, that would typically have radius where they meet, so that, so that your sidewalk would be able to follow the curb line, and the sidewalk would be within the right-of-way, which typically bodes out at the innocent. In this case, he doesn't own the property, it's not in, it's not in the right-of-way, so he's, and right now, there's no sidewalks proposed, so they don't have to fit that in.
Through the chair? Yes, go ahead.
I just, I had a question for Phil, does this affect the fire department turning, you know, just to have the rounded corners of pavement meeting up with Pleasant Street? Is this something for the fire department?
So typically, the traffic turn plan, the auto turn plan, or sweat path plan, whatever we would call it, would take into account where the radi, the curbing is, but because there is no sidewalk, they can put the curbing right at the apex of the property line.
Can I make a point at the sidewalk?
Hold on one second, hold on one second. Go ahead and finish.
Yeah.
Okay, yes.
The lack of sidewalks is a separate waiver, so I don't think we should assume that there's not going to be any sidewalks?
I agree, it is a separate waiver, yep. I'm sorry, I kind of lost it. So it's not necessarily the fire department's requirement?
No, I mean, obviously, you want to have an access that the fire truck, the emergency vehicles can access.
Right.
But I think the whole, the whole right-of-way, if you have enough land, you can create the right-of-way so that everything's nice and neat, and, you know, your conventional sidewalks, your grass drips, and yada, yada, the whole section can fit in there. In this case, and in several cases, you know, similar to it, if they created before, if the right-of-way is created before the subdivision regulation, you know, you can't fit them in, or you can ask, you know, get a waiver, get an easement from the neighbors to provide that, and that's how you would arrest.
Yes.
Through the chair, I guess, two questions. So number one, if there were sidewalks, then this waiver becomes more meaningful, correct?
Correct.
And then secondly, so from what you're describing, it sounds like if we were, if we were to require this rounding, then that would result in additional land being impacted for the butters.
We maybe discuss this when we discuss sidewalks, and there are currently no sidewalks on Pleasant.
There are no sidewalks on Pleasant?
On that side of the street.
On that side of the street.
On that side of the street, okay.
Yeah, but you mean no sidewalks.
Yeah, it does make sense to, to talk about sidewalks at the same time.
Can I, I don't, I'm looking at the 8.2.1, and there's seven subsections, and I understand what Phil is talking about the right-of, but I don't see anything about sidewalks and right-of-way, so, and they didn't say, they said all of them, just blindly, I'd like to feel more comfortable with exactly waiving.
So your point is 8.2.1G?
8.2.1.
G? G?
G. I have it as the waiver being in section 8.2.1, location and alignment all subsections?
This is the updated one.
Oh, the updated one.
Has a G next to it.
Okay, so it's only G, thank you, that's an update, that helps.
Yep.
Property, can I re, is it okay?
Yeah, no, please do, please do.
Property lines at street intersections shall be rounded or cut back to provide for a curb line radius of not less than fifteen feet, a rate of way shall be required by the board where determined, so I guess I would ask specifically, why is this an issue?
Well, as I mentioned, it's, I'm not an engineer, I'm not quite sure why it's an issue, but it's, we can't, at the intersection of where the right-of-way of Pleasant Street and the corner of Buckland Street and the adjacent property, we can't provide a rounding at that, where those two points intersect. The reason why we comply with the turning street, the truck plan and so on, is because where Buckland Street intersects Pleasant Street, the edge of the pavement is approximately thirty feet away from the edge of the right-of-way, so we can provide a turning radius out within the right-of-way.
Into the other side of the street.
Right, so, but we can't provide a turning radius, because these lines come in at a right, at ninety-degree angles to the street, so we can't provide a turning radius where this is saying that we, where the two lines intersect, basically.
Thank you.
So it's out of our control relative to that particular provision.
Okay.
But we do provide the roundings where the entrance of Buckland Street intersects with Pleasant Street, the existing paved way of Pleasant Street, if that makes any sense to you.
John, did you have any, I forgot to ask you on the first two, but I apologize for that.
No comments on that, yeah.
I see that we have a comment from the audience, this one here.
Good evening, Peter Barberi, again, I represent the owners of both sixty and sixty-two Pleasant Street. Two, two points, one, as I understand the plan now, it includes additional improvements on Maple Street Extension, and that was not part of the original plan and application. So I would question whether that aspect of it can go forward without that property owner signing, without a proper care of notice, without notice to a butters of that new land being part of the application. I think you're entitled to that review and approval. So that's procedural item number one. Item number two, from the viewpoint of the construction waivers that you are now beginning to talk about, and had no issues with the first two waivers that you talked about, but from the viewpoint of the construction waivers, you know, your stormwater regulations set up procedures and guidelines and construction details to protect the town and protect the apartments, and I don't think there's any reason to waive any of those. There's no argument that beyond the first two hundred and twenty feet of road, the applicant owns all the land, to make all those improvements that are called for under your regulations. So there's technically no reason to waive any of those, be it curbing, be it sidewalk, be it underground utility, be it light, be it any aspect dealing with drainage requirements as well, because he has the land, it's his own land, there's nothing stopping him completing the improvements in accordance with your regulations. The first two hundred and twenty feet or so, little bit of different story in the sense of those regulations, excuse me, that with the way, assuming he has rights and knows, is limited as to what he can build. Questions from that viewpoint of course payment, were opposed to that without a specific agreement and maintenance and a budget, if they're going to have it, to make sure it's maintained, there's a sufficient budget for those property owners to make sure it's maintained, not only for our protection of my clients, but also the town, because a portion of that extends out into the road. So I don't think you should take any action on any of that stuff until a budget is in place, a maintenance agreement is in place that's recorded, affecting all the lots that would be part of this development. So construction waivers, we're against, particularly beyond the first two hundred and twenty feet. The other ones that I think we're against in the nature of anyone that would have impacted drainage running off from the compliance property, and I don't think any approval should be given until such a time as it's proven, not that it shall not affect the butters, but it's proven that it will not affect the lots, and there shouldn't be any condition of approval for a subsequent review and approval of things, because that's the purpose of this public hearing. So those are the two points.
Thank you so much.
Through the chair?
Yes.
I just want to say that I totally agree, and I was looking for the right time in these waivers to state exactly what the gentleman said, as far as treating the first section of the two hundred and twenty feet different, and not, you know, allowing some waivers, but the second section, it's all his property, and he should build a road like every other developer built a road.
I totally understand. Anybody else want to, yep. Other questions or comments on the property lines, the pavement rounding at street intersections, which would be, following this conversation, in the part of the property that he doesn't own completely in control?
Well, I don't see any specific details as to what he would suggest as an alternative, except that he said it would be rounded, and I'm seeing a picture over there that shows it rounded, but I don't think it's in our folder, we didn't get it in time.
It's included in the plans submission.
We don't have any plans.
But, so, so that blue, the blue section is, can some...
This plan, this plan was submitted as part of the plan package, so what we're talking about is in this area right here.
Some minor, a minor curve.
Right.
And so...
This section here, which is what Mr. Barberi is claiming that is a new submission to the application, we disagree, it's an easement, and so it's not part of the...
Do we yet have documentation that easement exists?
I have documentation that we have...
We yet have documentation that that easement exists?
No, we have an agreement.
So I, I don't know how we approve a plan if we don't know that these, that includes that necessarily.
Well, I was reading through some of your other decisions that you made, and you made it that...
You know what, we're talking about this one, and I'm going to lose my patience really quickly if we don't stay focused on this one, I'm just telling you where I'm coming from.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, we're happy to provide a copy of the agreement, as I mentioned at the last meeting, we made quite a few modifications to address public safety and fire access and fire protection, and that's all part of the agreement that we have to make those improvements, that we can offer those to the town.
And I know for a fact we asked for you to provide that documentation, or I did. So if you're happy to do so, I really would like you to do so.
I'll discuss it with the owners and see if they want to disclose it, I mean, it's not my, there's a confidentiality.
Well, your plan hinges on, at least in part, on that ability to do that, so...
Understood, we can set that...
Would it be appropriate to disclose the nature of the agreement without the financial terms? Because I mean, what we care...
Well, I don't care about the financial...
That's my point, I mean, I think what Mr. Patrozi is concerned with is that there's some financial considerations that they don't want to disclose, all we care about is that there's actually some agreement in place.
Yeah, there is a signed agreement, but essentially, I don't think, I don't know if you were at the last meeting enough, but we met with the homeowners, and they have some improvements that they'd like to see the help there, they don't have access to sewer, they don't have access to a strong water system there. We were available to, amenable to extending the sewer line to their property, so they would be able to tie into our forced main, and we were also met with the fire chief, because on Maple Street Extension, there isn't currently a hydrant for fire protection, so, which would also help them, we were extending the water main up Buckland Street to the corner of Maple Street Extension and Buckland Street, installing a new hydrant, and we're also providing them with new driveway accommodations on their property that would also act as a turnaround for emergency vehicles in the event, and also, we're going to provide snowplowing and that kind of maintenance that would be part of the homeowners association that would take care of it.
So all I'm suggesting is that you can redact any sensitive information to it?
We could probably make accommodations to that.
And clearly, they may not have seen the sewer rates, what's happening with those in town.
Well, I know that they're looking for people to tie in, so, best I know, but that is the reason why I don't feel that they need to, it's not needed to amend the application, because it's a, it's an existing right-of-way, we're seeking, we simply seek, obtain their permission to make these improvements in exchange for a lack of objections to the proposal. It's already an existing right-of-way, similar to Buckland Street, so we're just making it a connection, which, under the, under your regulations, if you really go into 8.2.1, a, the board's regulations provide that we're obligated to provide extension of the roadway to properties to make connections for future roadway networks, so this, in some respects, would be doing that by connecting the two roads.
Yes.
I think we're kind of good on this, because to your point, we will get it in writing, and to Gary's point, we can redact it and don't need the financials, so I would suggest that we make a motion to vote on the third.
I'd be happy to email the agreement to John in the morning, if that would be acceptable to the board.
So, so I'm just thinking in my head about an approval of the waiver that is conditioned upon the applicant's proven ability to utilize the pieces of property?
That makes sense, but which waiver were you thinking?
This is 8.2.1.1G, number three on our list.
Okay, because of the rounding applies to both sections?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, sure, thank you.
So, does that make sense to, I'll entertain a motion to approve this waiver to, to waive the requirement to round the pavement at street intersections?
Subject to?
If, subject to...
The pavement, property law.
Sorry, pavement, it does say pavement rounding, I'm sorry, so...
It's a little out of the...
It says property lines, pavement rounding at street intersections. What is the actual waiver?
I think that's what it's, property lines at street intersections shall be rounded or cut back, so I guess it's property lines, not pavement, I guess. It's property lines.
Does that make sense?
Property lines, so that you can't put the pavement, the curve.
All right, so to waive the requirement to put the pavement in at a curved radius?
To not require rounding at the property.
Okay, all right, so I'll entertain a motion to not require the rounding at the property lines at both ends of Buckland Street, should it be constructed contingent upon or subject to document, documentation, proving that the applicant has the right to construct the roadway through private properties on both ends.
So moved.
Seconded.
Is there any further?
Just one point of discussion, I just wanted to state that I think we're also, again, assuming that that rounding has no impact on emergency access.
I think emergency...
I see the chief nodding his head yes, so I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, I think that that is a different question, that's, yep.
Either way, I wanted to make sure that the, that the analysis for the emergency vehicles wasn't dependent on having that rounding.
Right, right. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? So it is subject to you documenting prior to doing anything, that you actually have the right to do the streets on those both ends? Okay. I will, yep, I will entertain, if you want to stick around, if we're able to come back...
I can stick around.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion to... Okay. So I will entertain a motion to, um, continue this public hearing to a later point in this hearing and open the public hearing for Whisper Way, um, as amendment to the special permit concept plan and the definitive subdivision plan.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Yep. All right, are you folks ready?
Do we just want to comment for the, oh, they're leaving now.
What's that?
I don't know if those people were staying. I, I just want to make sure they understood that
We were gonna talk about it.
the conversation's gonna continue.
I hope that was clear.
And, um, we need to close that line somewhere.
Okay. There we go. We got Gary. Gary's got it.
Thank you.
Um...
Good for something.
Good for a lot of things, but man, you are tall. So, um, we, we have changes from the last time? Do we have changes that are new tonight?
Yeah, there were changes that were reviewed by Beta.
Are there changes that are new tonight? I'm asking.
Oh, sit, oh.
We're, we're passing out things. Are those new to us tonight? Is that new?
This is new. So this, I, I wanted to touch base with you before I pass it out.
Yes.
They did send it to me like today.
Okay.
I didn't know if you wanted me to pass it out until we could talk about it, or if you wanted to hold the Tuesday deadline.
So we are holding the Tuesday deadlines firm. Until such time that we are actu- actually, it has to be firm. And I know that in this case, we don't have a lot of, of, uh, butters that are focused on it, but it's very, it's impossible for me to actually react to the information in real time. I don't know how other people feel, but from a public access and, and impact position, there's no way the public can participate if we get things the same day. You are welcome to introduce it, okay, but we're gonna have to have an, an opportunity to react to it.
Yeah, I think, I think that we would be comfortable if you guys are comfortable. What we're looking for ultimately is a vote tonight. I think they're fairly straightforward things for you to do, tend to see from your mouth.
Um, okay, so what, hm, yes?
I, I realize that it might seem simple, but we get inundated with information on the day of the meeting.
I understand.
And, and all of us have day jobs. And, and so while it might seem simple for us to, to react to this, um, you know, the, the submitting something the day of and expecting us to react to it and then vote, I personally, I, I think we've, we've gotta move away from that expectation.
I don't think that we have ever done that either, to be honest. So, and I, and I, for a lot of the right reasons. So go ahead and introduce it to us, but we do have to have an opportunity to have it reviewed. I don't know, I don't even know if John has had a shot at it, so. So go ahead, yeah.
Two plans that are included in there are, there's a turning radius plans for, uh, basically a delivery truck and a fire truck. Beta's comments was to show that the truck would be able to, you know, standard thirty-foot-long, um, box truck would be able to pull in, make a turn, pull out.
Yep.
And it's also one in that for the, uh, fire department, whatever, their, uh, their ladder, the tower truck, and everyone, uh, we have the, basically showing that...
They can turn back in there?
Right, that they're able to pull in and make the movement, maneuver to turn around and pull back out. So that's what's included in that. And it's also a budget for the stormwater operation, I mean, it's going.
Okay.
So Madam Chair, if I may clarify, the rendering and the O and M cost thing are the things I received today. There's, I think, other plans. I believe those were received previously.
Yes, okay. So this rendering, does it represent a difference from your submitted plans?
I don't believe there's any changes to that rendering. I think the drivers changed a little bit, but other than that, the, the, the overall concept.
You're just, you're just showing your turn radius at the ends?
Yes, in the area where they'd pull down and be able to, you know, they'd pull in, they'd stop, make their delivery, and then turn around and back out from there.
Madam Chair, if I may, is there, is there any reason this couldn't have been done before the deadline so that we could actually review it, pack it? I mean, if it's just, if it's so simple, it seems like this could have been done last week, and we could have reviewed it with the rest of our materials. I'm, I'm sorry to make a point of it, I just, I've got like seven stacks of paper that are coming in for multiple hearings tonight, and like, at some point, we, we, we have to become more diligent in when we submit things because it's just...
That's all we're trying to, it's, we simply just didn't, of all the, the things that we had to address, we didn't get to that turning radius, uh, that was being worked on last week, and, and it didn't get completed until today. So that's why we haven't had a decision. So I certainly understand that that's...
Yeah, and, and like I said, I know we've, we've bend the rules on this for a long time, and I'm not trying to
No, I don't...
be difficult just on this one, but...
No, we don't actually, we don't actually bend the rules. Um, we do make people come back, but we do let people, what, what the fixed rules are is that you can't even introduce it or talk about it if it hasn't met the deadline. That's the rule we're taking, but we don't, we, we have to have it reviewed. And there isn't a reason that it couldn't have been in on time. It just isn't.
No, I, I agree.
Okay.
I'm even comfortable if you don't wanna talk about it, to be honest, those particular pieces of information. If we wanna just go over the stuff that Beta has, we're...
Yep, how about we do that?
So I'd rather do that because we're, at the end of the day, we're just gonna talk about it again at the next time.
Right, that's true.
So just for efficiency, let's talk about the things that have been reviewed, and, and this stuff will push off until it's submitted as part of a formal process. Is that okay?
Yeah, perfect. Okay.
Try to type across this question to the chair.
Sure.
So I was not able to make the last meeting that went on the tenth, but I did watch it today.
Yes, yes.
But I do have a few questions. I know you guys went all through all the waivers. Were you gonna go through them again?
We did not vote the waivers.
Right.
Yes, we are definitely gonna vote them.
Okay, so I'll have an opportunity after this. Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. Um, okay, so did you wanna start us off, or do you wanna?
Well, if you wanna go through the waivers again, I certainly can.
Did we vote the wa- we did not vote the waivers, did we?
No, we could go through them one by one and...
And, oh, you asked for how people felt broadly. That's what it was?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. All right. Is there, um, I think I may be operating off an old list. How many waivers are there?
I have nine.
I think I have an old list in front of me.
Nine is correct. There were eight that were on, there were eight that we reviewed.
I have ten.
Is that correct?
You have ten?
So in your memo, the waivers are listed on the other side.
Oh, right.
You know which page it is?
The other two.
Uh, ten, ten of the memo.
Thank you. Perfect, thank you, John. This is my opportunity to say, for all the folks at home, all the folks here, and John's wife, when he watches it on tape, he's doing an excellent job. Seriously, John, excellent job. Thank you. Go ahead, we can start with it.
Okay, so, um, the, um, request, the first one, uh, at least on the list that we have submitted, was a cross, a waiver to not include cross-sections of the street at fifty-foot intervals.
And I, if I'm remembering it correctly, um, we didn't, as a board, we did not have issues with that as long as Beta was satisfied?
Correct, and Beta had specifically asked for cross-sections at fifty, at Station Fifty, Station One plus zero zero, One plus fifty, and Five plus sixty. And we did provide those, and I believe Beta was satisfied with those cross-sections.
Um, any questions on that one, Dave?
No.
All right. Do people wanna just talk about these for the last time and vote them?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So I will entertain a motion to grant the waiver, um, from, uh, providing the cross-sections at, of each street at fifty-foot intervals.
Still moved?
Seconded.
Okay, any further conversation or comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Uh, the next one, uh, the board actually wasn't sure that we needed to ask for this as a waiver, so it's kind of up to you whether or not you want to. Um, we're not, we were asking for a waiver for the trees, to not show the trees that needed to be retained within the right-of-way, basically because there are no trees that are gonna be retained within the right-of-way, which is why the board felt maybe we didn't need to ask for that waiver.
Do you feel better having it to, I mean, it seems...
Do you hear? I did that one question about it. Sorry. So, do you plan on having the trees within the five to twenty feet of the right-of-way? The street trees that are described in one of the other requirements? Because outside the right-of-way is where it's...
Outside of the right-of-way?
Right.
Yeah, we're not asking, we're not asking for that. We're not asking for a waiver for that.
So you'll have the streets fif- five to
Yeah.
twenty feet from the road, right-of-way, twelve feet apart?
Yeah, yep, they're, they're actually shown on the radar.
Okay, cool.
Yep.
Anybody else? So should we just vote the waiver because it's requested? We don't have a problem with it?
Yep.
Okay, I'll entertain, uh, a motion to approve the waiver for showing the trees that are to be retained within the right-of-way.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, go ahead.
Uh, location of the proposed streetlights. We're requesting that the streetlights not be installed within the subdivision. Again, we had a significant discussion about this, and I think the overall, um, feel was that we were not going to require the streetlights, which certainly that's up for your vote tonight.
Any, any comments or questions?
So I do have mixed feelings on this, and I noticed that you guys did as well, because I'm a fan of having some soft lighting throughout the neighborhood. However, you know, so streetlights, we've shut down, but, um, street lamps in people's driveways, I think is a good idea, but we haven't required that of anybody else, so.
Can I ask the fire chief? I'm having second thoughts about it because I'm very often a fan of no street lighting or, or forced lighting. Um, but I'm wondering about your feelings on it. Just given the nature of the complex and lengthy driveways and so forth, is it, is it something that you would see as a safety feature to have the driveways at least lit?
So I guess my personal opinion would be any lighting always helps, but I don't know that, I know it from a driven public safety-like requirement. It doesn't, it isn't like listed in some of the CMR pieces that I usually reference when I'm talking to you about access and other areas. I did talk with the, uh, police a little bit about street lights, and they were unaware of a requirement. Um, but they do know that there's, um, a standard of, in the more denser areas, you see it, you know, urban areas definitely look for street lighting for safety. Uh, in Hopkinton, we noted, we checked some of the subdivisions. Some of the intersections, they try to keep street lighting at, if, and it kinda depends on the, the flow and kinda a feel for it. But I don't know of a CMR or a regulation that drives it, especially for fire.
Okay. I, I will just say that from my perspective, um, I'm struggling a little bit with the design, although I love the piece of property, and I love that there are gonna be homes up there, just it's, you know, uh, because of the complicated property. Um, and I feel like if there's gonna be lighting, we almost want to include it so that we can keep it from being...
Going up to the sky, yeah.
Yeah, being overly excessive, but, so I'm, I'm actually having a little bit of a flip-flop on the lighting feeling.
I will comment.
Mm-hmm.
So I do put my money where my mouth is because I didn't have one when my, when my house was built. But I, I dug the trench by hand a hundred feet and had the electrician come in and wire it. So, I mean, I'm a really big fan, and the driveway lamps, I think I would support that.
I'm, I'm going back to street lighting. Um, I think the homeowners themselves can, um, deal with their trenching and their, their lights and hopefully, and hopefully provide ones that are down, um, lights and respectful. Um, I'm not for full-blown streetlights, but I just feel the, the direction that they're going in and the length of the driveways that I think as far as just a pathway wayfinder, um, and for public safety, that it, it's not like a hard, there's no hard rule, but it's the changing slopes of this, you know, site, um, which I still would love to see some three D modeling because I know it's possible.
But we're talking about lighting.
But we're talking about lighting, so that it, that street lighting could be located where there aren't six, excessive hills or excessive, and, and only in moderation so that cars can, can navigate, um, and, um, say, and trucks and, and safety equipment can figure out where they're going to if someone's in a, in need, so.
Do you hear? Can I ask that for a clarification?
Yeah.
So Deb, you said street lighting, but I think you mean driveway lighting, right? Because street lights are twenty feet telephone pole high, whereas dri- driveway lighting are more like eight feet, like...
I don't know. I don't think we've always approved, um, major highway street lights. I'm talking about smaller baller lights. I'm thinking about stuff that would be friendly to the dark-skinned, um, community. Um, just something as a wayfinder, whether it's, um, at the end of the driveway on the street, you know, different driveways. Um, I just think humanistically, um, it's very important, whether it has their address numbers on it or whether it, um, you know, is at a periodic separation, um, I, that would be my vote. It would be for some kind of guidance for us to, to give them and have them come back with, you know, some, something.
Hold on one second. Um, go ahead.
So I actually have a question through the chair for, for John.
Perfect.
Because the, the waiver that's requested, as I look at it here, it only says that they must identify the location of proposed streetlights. And I was just looking for what the language is that we actually ask for in our bylaws around streetlights because at the end of the day, from, from my take, you know, our job should be to enforce the, the, the bylaws that are in existence. And if there's a good reason to, to waive those, then so be it. But if, if, even if we're all sort of personally, we don't like streetlights, then the right solution is to go change the bylaw that addresses the streetlights. So I, I don't know, John, if, if there's, if you know where there's something in the bylaws that provides more clarity on what, what we like other than section five point four point one point Y.
One out of ten.
Off the top of my head, I don't know where it provides more clarity after we get to it.
Okay.
I'm just gonna give some input to John.
Yeah, yep.
So I did look through the rules and regs of the subdivision and didn't find anything, but I didn't go back to the zoning. What is this agricultural? The zoning?
It is zoning.
So it might be something, yes, there, I don't know. I, but just to Gary's point, I couldn't find anything either.
Robert?
I think I might...
This, uh, just...
Hold on one second, Amy.
Just so I'm clear, this is something I don't, I don't get to vote on, this, uh...
You don't get to vote on it, but you can weigh in and ask questions and make your opinion known.
So the vast majority of Hopkinton that has neighborhoods like this, there is no street lighting. Like, I don't know why we would try to enforce something that the vast majority of town doesn't have. It just doesn't make sense to me. Um, it's a dead end. It's not like there's people that need to walk to business or where there's gonna be that type of environment. It's a dead end, like, hey, we...
It is essentially in the bylaw, so we just have to confront it each time. That's why we deal with it. But, um, I have a tendency to lean your way. Amy?
I guess, I was gonna suggest that, um, so we're just supposed to require the location of the proposed streetlights. It doesn't say they have to be so many feet tall or how many feet apart. So I was gonna suggest maybe we don't waive the location yet, but suggest that they do some lower-level lighting just for wayfinding at each house.
I was, that's what I asked the, the client if, um, he would be amenable to doing some sort of, um, like a dr- like a more driveway, something you would see typically along a driveway, um, so that it, there's lighting available, but... so that it, there's lighting available, but, but not, you know, not necessarily streetlight.
Yeah.
I would be comfortable with that.
I'd be supportive of that as well.
Yeah, me as well, so I'm...
Motion related to that, right, or if you might craft it, but something that we would...
It's actually, well, they just didn't decide if that's, if that's street lighting or...
Well, we're gonna, we agree that that's what we all seem to like, but we're not, I think we're not going to waive the, the providing of streetlights within the subdivision, right? We're not going to waive that.
I would feel, if I may, more comfortable with waiving the streetlights, and putting some verbiage in there about driveway lighting.
That's what I was going to suggest, because if you don't waive that, it, I think may come across as we're supposed to be providing the streetlight.
Okay, so could we waive the location of the proposed streetlights with the condition that low-lighted driveway lights would be provided instead?
And we, we need to see them, right? The...
They would show where they would be.
Sean?
I wouldn't waive the word "street," because I think once you start to put in driveway, then you're talking about the individual owner's preference, and I would say that the developer would have more control over the dead-end street at the start of the driveway, so I would be more in favor for low-level lighting, low-level lighting off the street at the end of the driveway would be more instructive.
So...
I think that's what I meant, at, at the driveways.
So how about, how about you give us, I, I really liked the way you said it for, for wayfinding.
Right, so we would waive the requirement to provide streetlights within the subdivision on the condition that low-level wayfinding lights be provided at the end of every driveway?
Okay.
Is that right?
Yeah.
And at the entrance to the neighborhood?
And we would, and will provide a plan that shows you where our laws are going to be located.
Okay.
And I'd ask that they be dark-skinned compliant?
Absolutely, you can ask that.
So, so just to clarify though, the, the waiver that's being requested is just that you're showing the location of the proposed streetlights on the plan? That's it?
No, it's from providing streetlights within the subdivision.
That's what I'm, I'm not, to be honest, based on your question, I'm not sure that your, that your bylaws require streetlighting. Your bylaw requires that we show you where the streetlighting is going to be.
Okay.
I, I don't, that's, I guess it's an interpretation, and it's up to you guys how...
Location of proposed streetlights.
Okay, so if we require the location of the proposed streetlights, I guess it's implicit that we are expecting streetlights.
Friendly modifications and amendment?
Throw it out there.
Not to exceed ten feet in height?
I think it's premature.
But they're going to bring it back to us, right?
They're going to bring back the plan to the citizens.
But I wouldn't think they needed to be monstrous lights.
Ten feet is, I was thinking five.
Low, I'm okay with lower, I just don't want to see the big ones.
Six, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine, I just don't want to see the big ones.
But when the plan comes in, yes.
Interrupt, yeah.
Yep, I'm fine with that.
All right, so Amy has made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, all right. Side slopes.
Side slopes on the three-to-one max. Again, this basically allows us to minimize the amount of, of clearing that we have to do in order to construct the road, because there are, there's a lot of steep areas here. Trying to catch up to the grading using three-to-one, just, it takes up a third more space than if we only do two-to-one. So, that's why we're asking, I think it's in keeping with the open space bylaw to minimize the area that we're, that we're clearing in order.
I'm amenable to that conversation too, but I see that Beto needed you to define the limits where this is necessary, and that has been done.
Correct.
Yes.
I just had a question, I don't know if you can answer this or not, but I'm curious if the original submission for the twenty-four units in the Loop Road, if that had more or less of an impact on the, on the side slopes than the, the current plan?
I'm sure, and I don't know specifically, but I'm sure just by the sheer length of the road, that it would have applied to more areas than, than this does.
Okay, so, so fair to say that, that the impact in this, in the current proposal is, is most likely less than it was?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion to waive the requirement on the side slopes as requested.
Still moved.
Second.
Is there further discussion?
Further discussion? If we're making the slopes deeper on the side of the road in various areas, how many areas is it?
There's just one strip, and it's about a hundred feet long.
Does that make it less passable by someone walking on the street?
No, it's, it's on the shoulder, off to the side. The one area that we're discussing is right up against where the existing Whisper Way is, that exceeds the slopes. The existing current slopes are greater than what the subdivision rules allow, so what we need to do is to flatten that out. I need to grade a little bit more, which pushes us closer to the town forest, so it's just that one section that is two-to-one, which is less than, you know, it's, it's not a...
And, and we're making, and we're making the overall road, so right now, it's, it's already greater than two-to-one, or it's already at least two-to-one?
At least two-to-one.
And, and it's, you know, passable, we've all, I don't know, everybody's been on sidewalk, but we've all walked on the street on the existing Whisper Way, and then we're going to be, you know, upgrading existing Whisper Way with, you know, so it'll be even safer than it already is, is...
Okay, so the twenty-four foot width of the drive will provide safety if someone needs to meet somebody at the end of the road?
Yeah, plus this is out, this, these slopes are outside of not only the pavement, but also outside of the sidewalk.
Okay, all right.
Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Disturbance to the natural topography.
Again, we have, and this is primarily because of the way existing Whisper Way does not meet the, it doesn't, it exceeds the maximum slopes at the entrance, so trying to get the new road to meet the required slopes requires that we fill more than eight feet to facilitate the crossing at the burn pool wetland right at the beginning. So we're constructing two retaining walls.
Okay, any questions or comments from the board?
So...
Yes?
Yeah.
So if you're constructing retaining walls, are the retaining walls on the upside of the wetlands or the downside of the wetlands?
The upside, so the wetlands will be below the road.
And will the, so will these berms have weep holes, and will water be coming through them from the road? And, you know, are there any concerns of salt or different types of...
There, there will not be any water coming from the road surface, that'll be collected by the drainage that we've designed to treat the salt and, and other items, so, and the Conservation Commission has reviewed this plan thoroughly, and I think it's close to approving it.
That was going to be my next question. When do you see the Conservation Commission tomorrow? Oh, big night.
One of the things I don't see here that would prevent granulars from coming through is I don't see any filter fabric, I don't see any landscape fabric. Is, is that wrong?
So a wall of this height has to be, first of all, needs a building permit and needs to be designed by, and stamped by a structural engineer, so we're showing it just for display purposes and how it affects the, the grading for the rest of the site.
Okay.
The wall itself can't be built based on just our plans. A structural engineer, that'll certainly be...
Will add to the packet after, once this is given approval, okay.
Anybody else? I'll entertain a motion to approve the waiver from disturbance to natural topography as requested.
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further comments? I just, in a long list of waivers, I, it's really, it's really because of the wetland impact that you have to ask for this?
For that one, it's a combination of the, of that and, and the existing drive, the existing roadway.
Existing roadway.
The existing roadway was built according, you know, built according to the correct slopes that are in your bylaws, then we would be happy to not bring in filter...
But it, it then means that you're doing, you're doing less disturbance.
And, yes.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody no? I'm a no. Anybody abstaining? Okay. We, I'm, I'm a no. All right. Disturbance to natural topography. What?
There's three that are disturbance to natural topography.
Oh, okay.
A, B, and C.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, right. So this one is a waiver about construction of roads, stormwater management systems, driveways, pipes, or other infrastructure construction on, on a land area which slopes at a grade of twenty-five percent underwater.
So, this is similar to, not the last one, but the previous one where we, where we were asking for the waiver for the side slopes from the road to minimize disturbance. This is specific to the detention basins in order to minimize disturbance. We're also asking to construct those at a two-to-one slope instead of a three-to-one slope. And I believe the only comment that came back from Beto had to do, or maybe it was just a discussion point, but similar to like, to our septic system, we have to have a three-to-one slope, or we have to include a impervious barrier to make sure that the water in the septic system, or in this case, in the detention pond, can't migrate through because there's less soil. So we're proposing to include the impervious barrier in, with this waiver.
Okay. Is, is that conditioned in there? I lose track.
It's, I, I don't think it's, it's included on the plans, so I guess in that fact it is.
So, can I ask a question?
Yes, yes.
So, I'm looking at your plans, I'm looking at Plan G nine-nine-three-two, and it shows the wetlands, and it shows a hard line around the wetlands. Can you show me where the filter fabric is going to go at a two-to-one slope?
So it's not, it's not filter fabric, it's an impervious barrier, so filter fabric...
So it's actually a...
Plastic.
Plastic, okay. Okay, where does that go?
Goes in the center of the berm, so you picture your berm being a trapezoid, and it goes right down the center.
Do you have a detail drawn to that? Can you point me to it?
It's on one of the detail sheets, the detail sheet of the, possibly the first one.
First detail sheet.
The detail sheet would be at the end.
Yeah. Oh, wait.
On the bottom left-hand corner. It should be...
Are you, Beto has looked at, I don't...
Yeah, I just, what, what I'd like to know is, I'm not a real fan of plastic, and I'm not a real flan, fan of slopes that are in excess around wetlands. I'm just wondering, what is the effect of this plastic? How deep, that's why I was looking for the detail, but I can't seem to find it. How deep is this plastic?
It goes a foot into natural grade.
And the, again, Conservation Commission is reviewing this, and their only concern really is the wetland protection, so...
And so where would the, the two-to-one slope be in reference to the, where...
It's a minimum of, it's definitely a minimum of fifty feet outside of the wetlands, because the detention basin itself is not allowed to be within fifty feet of the wetlands.
I would, I would, I, I still am waiting for a definition of where that, where that fabric's going.
It's on Sheet ten is the detail of it, on the bottom left-hand corner of the Earth and Dyke.
Can I look at yours?
Dan, this, this is up there, I don't know if you want to point it out.
Oh, sorry.
Can you just confirm?
Bottom left-hand corner.
Bottom left-hand corner, there's a detail of the berm, trapezoid of it, and there's a, the plastic, essentially they build it and then they excavate out a base of it, and there is...
The line right down the center.
So, so, that's, that's the...
That's the plastic.
And then what is the hard outline that's making the trapezoid?
Loman seed.
Loman seed, okay. And the loman seed is what you're requesting, the va, the, the variance, or the waiver, sorry?
No, the, the steepness of that slope.
Of the, of the loman, yeah, of the loman seed, yeah.
Sure.
I would say that I'm not comfortable with that. We've been through some really pretty horrible building experiences where we're in the middle of the spring and we're trying to get a stabilized site, and we have a lot of difficulty. I would want to maintain it, at, at first I want to get Comic-Con's impression of it before I said anything, so that, that's kind of my concern.
So you can condition it on their approval, we're not necessarily going to be able to require them to tell us what, how they feel about it?
Okay, I would make it on condition of their approval, because of our, and then I, I would lean to other members to get their feelings as to how they feel with that slope.
Yes.
Can I just confirm that Beto was comfortable with this change?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. If Beto's comfortable with it, then I'm comfortable with it.
Okay, anybody else?
I would, did know what Gary said.
Okay.
Can I, can I ask Phil a question? Just because he was okay with it, and because we did have...
Yeah, we can ask Phil a question.
Yeah. Phil, can I ask you a question? So when we, this is just in relationship to legacy, and we had, you know, the mud wash out, and can you tell me, was that anything to do with the slope ratio and how during construction, and sort of this barrier that should have been impervious? Is, is, is there anything that would indicate here a similar situation?
So, the, the situation legacy involves a lot of poor soils that are, with, with high fine content and high soluble or soluble soils. In this case, they're building a berm out of what I would presume would be good gravel and a suitable material to sustain a grade of two-to-one. Two-to-one is kind of the maximum you want to go with a natural. You could also provide, require them to provide a matting on the, on the slopes that would, you know, stabilize, make sure there's no erosion, but the barrier itself, so this, this is, they have a very, you know, I, I've been going back and forth with Dan on this quite a bit, because, you know, it, it is not an ideal situation, you know, you, you have that regulation for a reason. However, in this case, there, there's very little opportunity because of the wetland configurations, as, as Elizabeth mentioned, that they got to stay out of the fifty-foot, you know, area, and they've got to provide a certain volume, and they've got to, and this is at the ideal location for the basin, so there are many factors that are kind of dictating this kind of design.
Okay.
So provided they construct it well, and they seed it well, uh, and put the barrier in, I, I don't see any problem.
Would, would, would matting be visually obtrusive? Would the, the seed come up through the matting, is it that kind of matting?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, erosion control matting, I, I, they probably even have it, I would imagine, in detail.
Um...
Not, I'm not sure, and the, it's cer- again, certainly something that the Conservation Commission, um, whether or not, it, we would probably end up using the matting, one way or the other, because we, in order to get our certificate of compliance, um, with the Conservation Commission, we're going to have to stabilize these slopes. If they're not stabilized, the Conservation Commission isn't going to grant us a certificate of compliance, and that's not...
Do you have any objection to specifically using the matting?
No.
Yeah.
Alright.
So, so can I?
You can.
Move to, uh, grant this waiver with the condition that, um, erosion control fabric is used?
Yep. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any up, no's or any abstentions? This is B.
Seventy.
B.
Uh, any opposed or any abstentions? Okay. Uh, disturbance to natural topography, uh, a waiver to provide side slopes at two to one when the maximum slope is three to one.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I believe this is just a repeat.
Yes.
It was just copied over, I guess, in the comment letter.
Okay.
Eight-point-two-point-six-A was...
Was what we...
Was four, I think it was four.
Yeah.
It just had a different title.
That's why I said a nine.
Thank you. I appreciate your help. Alright. Um, stormwater basin embankments.
So this is for, um, a request to waive the requirement for the edge of the embankment being twenty-five, a minimum of twenty-five feet from houses, property lines, and roadway. We're well over twenty-five feet from a house, um, but we are not from the property line. Um, I, I'm not sure that I actually understand why this is a requirement because we have situations where property lines go through, um, a basin. It's, it, the, the, where the line is of ownership is somewhat irrelevant, but, um, it's nonetheless a, uh, requirement. We met, met it to the greatest extent possible. Um, again, trying to get this basin in the area that makes the most sense from my functioning, uh, perspective for drainage, and also meeting all the setbacks to the wetlands. Um, this, this is the one thing that we felt was the, the lesser of the evils to ask for a waiver from.
Alright, um, any questions from the board?
Can I, Phil, can I ask you why it would be a requirement to, at the property line in particular?
So, there may be s- there may be several, uh, reasons. Uh, one is, um, many places in, 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 uh, small towns like this, you know, you have, uh, requirements for septic systems, and, you know, there's going to be separation, you don't want an impact on a butter in terms of where you can put his septic system, um, and, but also just to, you know, some, some towns have, you know, require detention basins be on separate lots, some, some towns, uh, so it's, uh, there may be at the particular time that this was created, maybe there's a significant, um, you know, reason for this. Um, I don't, I don't know of many towns that are, that are consistent with this kind of regulation. So, and just general guesses, I guess.
Thank you. I appreciate your general guesses. Alright, uh, anybody have any questions, comments? Uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve the waiver for the stormwater basin embankments.
So moved.
Sorry.
Is there a second, Gary?
No.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'm sorry, I, I, point of discussion?
Oh, I need a second, sorry.
Second.
Okay, there we go, discussion.
Sorry, we were just talking about spacing with regards to property lines, which I think is the... Sorry, okay. It, it was, alright, nevermind. I'm good.
Yeah. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay. Uh, the requested waiver next is for the buffer areas. The applicant seeks a waiver from providing a hundred-foot buffer at the perimeter of the site to separate and or screen the development from abutting properties. The proposed subdivision includes roadway within one-hundred-foot buffer of, of the project site on the southeast corner in order to minimize impacts to slopes greater than twenty-five percent, and to accommodate the Board of Health's septic system regulations. Beto notes that the new concept plans has a spur that connects to a parcel in the southeast cor- oh, wait, this is...
Oh, I was going to say, this is...
The spur is no longer, right? Go ahead.
I don't know, I, I'm...
I was just taking from the last letter, and they just made a carryover.
Yep, yep, go ahead and explain it.
I don't, I'm not sure what this, this is another waiver?
This is a waiver from zoning, uh, two-ten dash one-thirteen-C-one buffer areas. It's a hundred-foot buffer.
So, I'm not sure if that applies. Uh, okay. You're going to need to explain, because I don't know.
Uh, the spur is to allow access to the backland.
Oh. Can you show us on the, just the conceptual drawing here?
There's actually two areas that are asking for reduced, uh, one-hundred feet.
Yep.
This is one section that goes out to the backland, to, uh, five acres back here for any possible future use. Uh, and the other section is in this corner right here, where the existing whisperway comes through and ends right here. There's a, a angle in the property line that creates a little short, short section right there. Remember, the original subdivision, we actually went, came right along the edges of, and touched the corner here. So, this is, we're less than, or more than one-hundred feet where we touched before, but now it's just a short section there. So, is that, and there's one area.
So, uh, so what is the buffer accomplishing over here? Is that, uh, on the southeast corner, what is the buffer, again?
Uh, we have, well, we're closer to, um, four-ninety-five in this area here, and then, um, but, you know, nothing's going to be built in this area. We have, um, and then, we have a hundred-foot here, we have a hundred-foot through all this area, it's just this one section.
So, the, the main purpose of the hundred-foot buffer is, I, I think, always been to, um, as a buffer to other, uh, developments for your open space. Uh, that's why it's required around the whole outside of it. Uh, in this particular case, we, there's only four-ninety-five and more open space around this, uh, town open space. So, we're really creating, the, the hundred-foot buffer is really a buffer to more open space.
Right.
So, I'm not sure that it, it, it needs to be there the same way that it typically would. Um, we're, we're adding to the existing open space that's owned by the town and, uh, extending it. We're just not extending it a full hundred feet in those two areas.
Alright, let me ask this, does granting the buffer accommodate that spur in any way, and, I mean... I mean, do you need the buffer for...
Yeah, the, yeah, the s- because, uh, yes, you can't, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to have the spur there if the...
So everything in our bylaws, the, the letter and the spirit of it is to not use open space development plans, subdivision plans to, um, necessarily open up, uh, other piece, big pieces of property that aren't being contemplated at the same time. So I have a, I have an issue with that. Because we don't know what we're contemplating behind it.
I, I would also say that, it, what it does is that you, it, that it loses the town's ability to access that area to expand the trail in any direction.
Is it over that spur? Pass and repass, or?
It, it's the, the buffer, the hun- the, the remainder of the buffer around the subdivision is adjacent to town property. Uh, I'm, so I'm not sure that it really cuts anything off.
So, so can I just clarify, the only places that you're requesting a waiver from this buffer are either abutting town property or abutting four-ninety-five property?
No, we're, the only place we're requesting the buff...
The waiver? With the hundred-foot, the waiver from the hundred-foot requirement?
Yes, it would either be four-ninety-five or town forest.
So in no place does that request, uh, waiver of the hundred-foot buffer impact private property?
Um, well, tech- no, because technically that's private property.
What do you, I'm sorry, what's that?
Below the little, uh, spur.
This, this property down here is not town prop- that's part of the private property.
So the answer is yes, then?
Yes.
It does impact private property?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I don't support it, then?
It's owned by the applicant. I don't know if that makes a difference to you, or owned by the...
No, I, I mean, i- in that case, in that case, the applicant could put it all on the table to contemplate all at the same time, so we knew what we were talking about. For me, that's my...
I agree with you.
That's my position. Anybody else?
Can we just defer on that particular, uh, waiver request?
Yep, absolutely. Um, alright, we have seven more minutes. Um, there is a request for a waiver on the lot frontage depth. Yeah, we can seek some waiver from providing six, sixty percent of lot frontage at a frontage depth, well, anyway, I'll let you explain it.
Uh, this, so typically on a, uh, open space subdivision, the idea is that we reduce the setbacks, um, to cluster everything close to the road.
Yep.
Um, to maximize your open space on the outside, it's just, in this particular case, because of the steepness uh, of the slopes out there, um, we're actually clustering the houses out away from the road.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so it does, so the, the shape of the lot, obviously we need to have more space around where the house is, rather than up by the road. So, um, it, just the uniqueness of this property, uh, and we're still maintaining the concept of, uh, minimizing disturbance, we're just doing it in a slightly different way, um, by moving it away, so it doesn't, the lot shape factor, this is the width that's up close by the road, um, does it, doesn't facilitate what we're, what, the way we're, uh, developing this open space.
And just to clarify, this is, John, I'm looking your way, we- this is something we're entitled to win?
That's what I just, yeah, just thought of that, um, I'm looking into that.
Okay. Any other questions?
I just have a question for Phil, and I, I know we've asked you a couple of times as to what the intent of these bylaws might be, but specific to this one, a lot frontage depth, any thoughts on why we require a certain lot width deeper into the lot?
Alright, so, they, uh, I, I think the intent is really to, as, as Elizabeth, is to have kind of uniform lots, and have, uh, the opportunity to have, all, disturb as less land as possible, so. However, in this case, they, they have a unique situation, in that, in that they have an existing road, um, and that they can only go a thousand feet, and one side of the road is not buildable. They can't use the frontage on that side of the, the west side of the road because they don't own the land. So they, they have very little frontage, they can only be a thousand feet, so they can only have, you know, they got this fairly sizable piece of land, and, and, you know, so they're, they're really restricted in terms of the amount of width, and width, and it's... So, if, if they get this waiver, then they can build what they want. Otherwise, they're going to be, I, I don't know how many lots you can probably reduce to six or so, I don't know.
I, I, I understand it would be very...
We're going to go back to John, John has...
So, just to answer, I think, the two questions, so, uh, lot frontage depth can be waived by the planning board, it's specifically mentioned. The whole point of lot frontage depth is to not have pork chop lots, uh, flag lots. However, it is provided that the planning board can waive it as part of the open space thing, which means it's tacitly allowing pork chop lots and common driveways to achieve that type of development where it's clustered in one area, it might not meet the, the setback and other dimensional regu- regulations that's set forth in zoning by law, but in this district, it's a different...
When they did ours, as we all know, Muriel pop- famously lives on a pork chop lot.
You do?
I do. Um, um, we had, our, folks have to have an, uh, our neighbors have to have an easement through their property so that we actually have the accepted frontage on North Street. Is that, yeah, I don't...
Everybody has, everybody has their, everybody has the required frontage.
It's, okay.
It's just that once you come off of...
It's the shapes of the lot.
Once you come off of the road.
Yep.
Some of them, for instance.
Yeah, see, for us, we're, we're a straight shot off, so we have it the whole way.
This has the required, and I'm not sure that this is a particular one, but, um, this has the required frontage here, but when you come back to the front yard setback, it's typically where you would have the house in a, in a, in a traditional subdivision here, much closer to the front yard setback, there's a required width of the lot.
Yep.
And you can see here, this necks down, and then opens up where the house is.
Yep, yep. So I'll be candid with you, the reason that I'm struggling with this one a little bit, and everybody else can weigh in, is that it is a precedent-setting decision, I think, and we need to be sure that we love this kind of idea in open space developments. Um, and I, I understand, I understand the property, I have trod upon it myself a couple of times, and I think that, um, personally, if I'm personally making the decision, I think I like the fact that they're going to be really unique little lots all tucked away. Um, I just want the, from my perspective, I want the board to consider how much we're going to love this on any, any lot.
So, just, uh, one of the things that Phil mentioned that I think is in particular unique about this property and not necessarily, um, applicable to other open space subdivisions is the fact that we're dealing with an existing roadway.
Yep.
That is, that runs along and to be, it actually currently runs on town property, not within the right of way. We're moving it out of town property and into the right of way. So, as you said, we're losing all of this frontage that, um, we would not have typically, there's, you're not going to come across another situation where you have an existing road that runs along a property line, is, is my point. So from a precedent-setting standpoint, I think you have a little bit of leverage to say, this is a unique situation.
I'll let other people weigh in, I, anybody else have... I'll let other people weigh in, I, anybody else have thoughts or concerns? We do have to open the next public hearing in seconds.
Um, through the chair?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, I believe that, you know, as, as we've seen various iterations of this, um, potential development, that the developer has, um, has done a good job in balancing the preservation of existing trees, um, the preservation of wetlands, um, particularly the not, not moving the existing road into, you know, a wetland area, but using the existing road and right of way, um, and it is, and I don't believe this is precedent-setting because this is very specific to this property in terms of, um, in terms of the limitations, but also what, um, the developer and the planning board have managed to do in terms of preserving a lot of open space and, um, natural features.
Did you all say something?
Yeah, I, I, I don't get to vote on this issue, so, um, but in general, I think, uh, diminishing our current zoning bylaws in terms of land use in this regard's not what we wanna do as a board. I would not be a fan of it, I, if I could vote, I would vote no.
Dave, do you have any thoughts?
Just a, a general question, are there limitations on the length of the driveways that we have, is that?
I, I, so, hold on one second, I just asked you that question, but I forgot to open the public hearing, um, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing on the commercial photovoltaic solar facility at zero Wood Street, um, it's a special permit and a stormwater management plan, and it will be, uh, continued to after the conclusion of this conversation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any, okay, perfect, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So, it just added a concern, because of the length of the driveways, and I think you do as well, and the whole layout, and for a safety point of view, I'll lead to that, but when we had the, the dual entrance, I, I felt more comfortable with emergency vehicles, that if a tree fell across the road on one side, you can get to all the houses. My concern here is if the tree falls across this road, you're not gonna be able to get to these ten or eleven houses, so I guess I would look to the fire chief to get some feedback on that.
Can I suggest that we, that I, I don't know if you believe that that is the same issue as the frontage depth required?
Yeah, I was just saying it was a general concept.
Yeah, and, and I, just, I know you guys wanna move on to the next hearing.
Well, my, well, my question was through the chair, sorry.
Yeah.
That, um, is there a limit on the driveways too, is that another waiver that we have to pass? Because there's nothing really where I can make my point as far as waivers, as far as safety.
So, I think that, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, I think the answer is, is that the waiver on driveways is for common driveways, not for the length.
So, if you have a big parcel of land and you wanna build your house in the back, then you can do that.
But we didn't have that as one of our nine, the common driveways, right?
It is, it's common.
Oh, it's coming?
Oh, it's common.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Must have been, I'd lay that on.
So, what did you wanna propose?
I don't think there is a limit.
There is no limit on length, it's for the common to share driveways, right?
Yeah, that's, it, it's not a waiver.
Oh, you're right, I'm sorry, it's, it's.
There's a separate, special permit.
Special, separate, special, okay.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the correction, yes.
I don't believe it's a separate special permit, I think it's captured in the open space special permit.
Okay, yeah.
Because they're allowed in open space.
It's not a wa, it's not a waiver, you're right.
Um, I would, if we're going to put off deciding a few other things, I would, I would be in favor of letting this sit a little bit, um, and seeing how we, how things kind of shake out, um, I, I really appreciate how hard and how difficult this site is, and I agree with Mary that the builder has gone above and beyond, um, and I also agree with David that there's some concerns, um, with the driveway length, um, due to its unusual setting, um, so, you know, if we're going to be waiting a little bit on some of the other decisions, I'd be in favor of letting this one sit a little bit, because I think that, that one of the problems with it is that the huge track, the hu, huge front area becomes unusable for the town, and then it becomes this very thin swath, sw, you know, swath of land around it, and, um, I have mixed feelings about that.
So, I don't, I don't have an issue with us, you know, passing over the buffer one, because that, quite honestly, is a pretty easy fix for us, if, depending on what we wanna do, uh, however, the lot frontage depth, if you're not willing to, um, to grant that waiver, that's a significant amount of work that we would like to accomplish between now and the next meeting, um, to, to try and reconfigure the lots, so that we meet the, the lot frontage depth.
So, um.
Yeah, Ron, come, come, come forward, just so folks in the room can hear you, please.
So, on the lot frontage, um, issue, we, we have done, we have developed a plan that, what allows us to do that, to, to, to do, to conform with the shape, and when we do that, we have to go through wetlands with driveways, we, it, it just, it kind of makes a mess of things, it, it moves things around, but it's definitely doable, but, um, and in this, in the, in your regulations, um, it, I mean, they anticipate this, may be waived by the planning board in, in order to achieve the purpose of this article, and, um, which is landscape, which is preservation of the, of the wetlands and anything that we can preserve, so I just, I don't think that there's a, I think, I, I think that they, they, they wrote this with, with something like this in mind, not, not something, it's not something that's, that's out of bounds of what, what, why they wrote, why they wrote it this way, I mean, it's the exact fit for, for this situation. Yeah, we can, we can do that, we can make those, those boxes, but it's just not as easy as just making a box, it slides everything around and.
So, so does conforming, I mean, does conforming to that lot frontage depth, does that impact the number of houses that you can build on this property?
No, no, we can still get the, the, the ten lots, or the, whatever, we can still get the same number of lots, well, um, it just, it just makes it more difficult, and it doesn't, I don't think it's gonna be visually, no one's gonna know where the property lines are, it's, it's wild terrain out there, it's, I, okay, it's not an exercise that I'm looking forward to doing, it, because it's, it's, um, it's just an exercise, and it's really not gonna change anything, other than add more, more burden, uh, more conservation work, more wetlands filling, or altering.
Yeah, so, I, I, I'm very torn at, as I sort of laid out, and for me personally, I think that it probably takes, um, what could be a really lovely configuration, and makes it a little bit less lovely as well, um, and, you know, tucked away and intentional and, and those kinds of things, um, it's just, uh, so, the flip side of it, just the flip side of it is, is that, that the lot is challenging because of wetlands and fixed, you know, topography and, and fixed, um, structural impediments, you know, man-made impediments and so forth, is, is really, I don't mean it to sound bad, it's really not our, our problem necessarily to fix, it's the developer's problem to fit within, um, and I just, um, I do candidly worry that, I'm, I'm trying to figure, I'm, I'm trying to think for myself how I justify making a waiver in this case, that doesn't necessarily mean I'm gonna be asked to waive it on a lot of.
Again, I think in particular with this project, the fact that half, we're losing half of the road, that, that's a significant.
So, uh, so you're not losing, the, the road is the road, you're not losing.
We're losing half of the frontage.
Yeah, but that's, that's the property you, you bought, right? I get it, I.
I, I understand.
Yeah.
If, if I may, though, that might impact the total length of the road?
No.
But.
No, it impacts the, it impacts, if, if we had, if we had twice as much frontage to work with, we would have twice as much play to move our.
Yes.
Frontage and to move our width, we're, we're losing not quite half, but close to half of the width that we're, that we have to play, and, and I'm not saying that it's not our responsibility to figure out how to do it, I'm just saying.
I, I, I know, and I'm not being flip.
This is, this is unique to this situation, if this wasn't an existing road, and we weren't trying to use the existing road, we wouldn't come, you wouldn't, as an engineer, the, absolutely never do we bring a road along a property line for that very reason, you lose half of your frontage and half of your width, so, it's unique, as far as a precedent is concerned, that's, I'm gonna, I'm saying that that's the most significant piece to it here.
I understand, thank you. Um, okay, anybody else have any, um, questions or comments, or does someone wanna make a motion?
I was gonna just say that I think I feel comfortable granting the waiver due to the uniqueness of the road, the existing road, and not disturbing as much wetlands, but anyways, and I would, I would make a motion to approve the waiver.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. Um, is there further discussion on the waiver? So, uh, all those in favor of the waiver signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no?
No.
No.
So, that's a tough one. Um, when is the next time, um, we have space?
Looks like August twelfth.
Okay, so, this is a good time to introduce quickly, and we'll talk about it at length towards the end of the meeting, but we are going to try the system where we continue public hearings to the date, similar to what the Board of Appeals does in town and what the Council does in town, and not set a time so that we have a more fluid ability to work with the agenda. So, the meeting starts at seven thirty, so it would be posted to August twelfth at seven thirty.
So, you'll still be posting a time in the future?
Not a specific time, no.
We'll, we'll be posting an agenda, that, that you'll know where you are in the agenda.
Yes, thank you. But for the purposes of the public hearing, um, it's seven thirty, and, okay. And do we have to post out, do we have to include decision dates, Colby?
Just for the definitive.
So, and then that, that would make, uh, the definitive subdivision decision, uh, for the nineteenth of August. Do I have a motion on, to that effect?
Sub move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, and the nineteenth is, is acceptable to the applicant for the decision?
Before we close the hearing, can I make a comment?
We just continued it, actually.
Oh, just, okay, that's fine.
Yeah, so, we're gonna, if anybody wants to take a five-minute bio break, this would be the moment, you know, could there be air conditioning in this case?
So, on that note.
Yes.
Herman has said that we may have to move the planning board meetings to the library, because Bill's Pizza has been complaining about people parking in the parking lot for these meetings.
Okay.
So, library is air conditioning.
Nice, actually, it's freaking cold over there, as I recall.
We meant to park in the Bill's Pizza lot?
Not anymore.
For town purposes?
Not anymore.
Good thing that, um, item that I approved, that will come, we have the additional parking over here and across the street, right?
We'll see, we'll see, um, so, but we just said for ta, for town hall, right?
Did we say, was that town hall?
No, we didn't.
We didn't, but don't we have to do that?
In the agenda, we can, we can do that.
We can set a time.
And we really shouldn't be saying where at the meeting, because.
We don't even know yet.
If it's not scheduled and we can't get the room, then that would be a problem.
Okay, we always have the room, but, okay.
Okay, we may not even want.
Yeah, no, we'll figure, as long as it's legal, I'm happy, how about that?
We may not even wanna say at the meeting what time it starts, because if something comes up, we started at seven o'clock instead of seven thirty, we're kind of bound by the seven thirty.
So, I'm gonna push back hard, people have to know when they have to.
It'll be there in the agenda.
Nope.
Okay.
Yep. When we announce it, it's hard enough to follow, I don't know, you, you must have done this as a, as a, as a, somebody watching from home, different things.
I always look at the agenda right before the meeting, always.
So, for the nineteenth, we might have air conditioning?
For the, yeah, or the twelfth?
He just told me this at the end of the day today, so.
Isn't that the twelfth, is, the twelfth is the meeting, nineteenth is the decision?
Right, yeah, I told this to you.
Wait, what meeting is the twelfth?
Our meeting, in August.
And.
Oh, August, I was talking about July.
We, I don't know when he wants us to move it, so.
Okay.
Maybe it'll be the twenty-second that we move.
Okay.
It was just kind of an offhand comment.
That Bill's Pizza, I'm gonna go over and have a conversation.
Oh, okay, so, for the twenty-second, we probably will have to be here.
For the, um, uh, eleventh.
Yeah.
Should disconnect these two, that's the original point, look at the road.
Yeah, they want this.
Okay, what is this, uh, do, I don't have.
A folder, so, so we can keep track of what those are doing.
I don't know.
It's hot.
Yeah, beautiful out there, huh?
With the high ceilings, hot air would rise, and it's just amazing cool there.
Wouldn't that, seriously, that's just too much, the hot air is just overcoming.
But it's funny how the, the number of people in the room, like, as it gets crowded, it's, if you, makes you appreciate how much heat it adds.
Oh, yeah.
Alright, so, um, we're just gonna wait two more minutes for Deb, uh, process-wise, um, we need to give him at least a little bit of time to get going here, so we're gonna go into probably nine fifteen. So, I think Deb can catch up, um, we'll go ahead and get started, um, just. Yeah, um, and we have to do this, um, so, we are gonna, we're gonna, um, compress our, what starts at nine for us, so we're gonna give you a half hour to introduce the program, project and get started, um, just process-wise, we have an outline that we customarily use, um, and so, starting fresh with a new hearing, it's an introduction and review by the applicant, then, uh, staff and consultant reviews, um, and then we usually take, we take some time from the planning board perspective, and also the members of the public who are interested here, to add to the agenda or the outline, if there's any areas that they wanna, want to add, um, so if you, um, would like to get us started by introducing yourselves and the project, that would be great.
Sure, well, thank you for having us this evening, my name is Matt Swansburg, I work for Rego Solar, I am the project developer for the solar project that we are proposing this evening, this is Brandon Smith, he's our civil engineer, and he is the smart one at the table that will walk us through the, the plans and the project in more detail, uh, we appreciate John, the town planner, facilitating a peer review that has actually already been completed, and we appreciate that the peer reviewer, Beta, has actually already turned a peer review report around to us in such a short amount of time, we received the peer review last week just before the holiday, uh, so candidly, we haven't had, um, an opportunity to really dig into it, to revise our plans, or to comment on, uh, what is in this report, so this evening, we're, uh, looking for the opportunity to give you a high-level summary of the project and to answer any questions that the board might have, as well as, uh, the public, and I'll let Brandon take away, uh, take it away from here.
Alright. Just so you know, I'm looking, I'm not looking past you, I'm looking at whatever you're speaking to behind you.
Okay, great, um, I'll just, yeah, I'll start by showing over a, kind of high-level overview of the supposed solar plant, so, you may be familiar with other solar facilities that.
Very familiar with other solar facilities.
So, this project is proposed on a parcel that's currently being used for a variety of purposes. Greenhouses up north, some gravel, sand gravel operations in the east, I'm sorry, in the west. So, our proposed array is effectively split up into three separate arrays. North covers that greenhouse area, the west that covers that sand gravel operation, and then the east, which is mostly wooded, some open areas, but primarily, primarily gone in by wooded areas. There's also a cell tower on the site that we're kind of up adjacent to, located here, so we're working with that. Generally, these solar facilities are solar monholes mounted on galvanized steel racking that's anchored into the soil using screw foundations, so very little earth disturbance, no concrete foundation or anything required for the module racking. That's all connected back down to, in this, for this project, there's two electrical equipment paths, transformers, inverters located at these two, there's one for the south here, and then there's this larger one kind of in the west, which actually also houses our energy storage equipment, batteries. That in turn is then connected to the interconnection point, which is at Wood Street down to the south here, just to kind of locate you, Wood Street's to the south, 495 to the east, and then the west is-
That was rude of the planning board chairman. Sorry.
Whitehall Brook runs to the west. We have some, so there will be some tree clearing required for this section. Would like to point out that these areas that are disturbed, we are proposing soil restoration in those areas, because we are, you know-
So close to the-
Some compacted, same soils. Our access to the facility, so this red line here is the perimeter fence, the seven-foot-high galvanized achievement fence. We do have a vehicle gate to access inside these, adjacent to these equipment areas for maintenance, you know, and potential replacement of equipment. The access is actually via an existing road on Mechanic Street, off of Wood Street. There's no, no work being done on the access road here, it's in good shape, gravel, hard pack, sand in places, really no work. The main work for, for access is we are, we do need to install a turnaround here to allow emergency vehicles, maintenance vehicles to be able to get into the equipment area in the turnaround and be able to say. Our interconnection is via underground as much as possible. We are proposing underground up until there is a, a water line easement here. We're actually going to be working with that, the owner of that easement, propose to trench through that, but there may be issues with the move. They need to go overhead for that, but we are going to be underground everywhere else.
What may have to go overhead, the utilities?
The utilities, the interconnection, the electrical line, just because of that water easement. At the interconnection, we are, everything's trenched or pad-mounted up to the, let me go up here, go to the interconnection area. It's going to split in Wood Street here, Mechanic Street. Our interconnection is down here, there's an existing garage that we're basically utilizing some of that part and the space to mount pad-mounted equipment, and again, we're making effort, every effort to keep everything pad-mounted underground. So, this is all utility equipment, meters, transformers, and there will be some proposed poles for the equipment that we cannot pad-mount. And that will then drop to the point of connection to the grid. So, that's a high-level overview of the project, at this point.
Okay, thank you. John?
So, reviewing this application, the array appears to meet the requirements of the bylaw, in terms of dimension setbacks and whatnot. The array is located on previously disturbed land, however, there is some clearing that's still needed, so we would recommend minimizing that as much as possible. And, we have not received, it is not required, but it would be beneficial to have this provided, anticipated views from Wood Street or Mechanic Street, either renderings, existing photographs, that type of thing, to see how the array would look from the street and from neighbors' properties, to the extent practicable. And, one other thing to note is that this is Chapter 61 land. I don't know the ownership status at this point, are you guys purchasing it, are you preparing to lease it?
We're releasing just the leased premises inside the perimeter fence that we're showing.
So, seeing as you bring that up, I'm gonna, I have a direct question that I think the lawyers need to answer, because Chapter 61A land is protected and enjoys a lower tax rate for specific reasons, and I don't know that any of that is meant to cover commercial solar photovoltaic installations. And so, typically, the town would have a right of first refusal if it was being sold. It just is a complicated question, I want a specific answer to.
Yep, and I'll talk to town council about that.
Yep.
However, just to continue on this comment, the select board has heard from Borrego and discussed it at their, their meetings, and they did express an interest in purchasing the property should the situation arise, and they stated that the land is uphill from town wells and abuts the town's Fruit Street property.
Mm-hmm.
However, if the land is developed as a solar array, the impact to the wellfields and Fruit Street land may be limited compared to other types of development, so that should be taken into consideration.
Yeah, so, I appreciate that, I've read that, but I don't, I don't, and I don't know that they didn't, I don't know that they asked that direct question about whether or not Chapter 61A property protection can stay in place.
As far as I know, they did not.
And then, I don't know what it means as far as the town being able to assert their rights if the use is changing, because what happens, for anybody who doesn't know, if the town does not exercise its rights to buy the property, the town does enjoy the benefits of those tax dollars coming back into the town to utilize. It's just an interesting question.
Chair, I read something online, pay it for what it's worth, but I think it was something like, you have to go back five years and pay the difference in the tax rate plus interest, something like that.
There's definitely a formula, yeah.
Yeah, I can attest to that. Typically, when we develop projects on land that is in a 61A tax program, when we lease a certain portion of that property, that portion of the property is taken out of the 61A tax status, and then the rollback on taxes is paid to the town. So, as a project, or as the developer of the project, that's what we would be looking to do.
So, my question is this, is that that seems to circumvent the town's ability to purchase it? And I just want to know how that all plays legally from our legal team.
Sure.
Okay. John, go ahead, I'm sorry, did you have?
The only final thing was that the, the Open Space Committee also reviewed this and also came to the same conclusion as the select board, that should have become available, the town would want to purchase it.
Yeah, so, it's an interesting, it's just a really interesting question, if it's a, it is necessarily an attractive piece of property that the town would want to buy, this sort of loses that, that leverage in, in, if it comes out of the 61A rights. I have a question on the frontage requirement that is top level, for, on Wood Street. It doesn't have the appropriate frontage on Wood Street, but it's a, it's a private way? So, what is the implication, I mean, for me, I don't not know the answer, but I would think that's a zoning board of appeals question, but I don't know.
It can be. A lot, a way in existence is a way, it's a private way, they can have frontage on private way.
Do you know what the frontage requirement is?
The-
For a solar facility?
It's in agricultural zoning, it's, is it 100 feet?
I don't know if I'm in there.
It's on the plans here, I believe it's 200 feet.
It's 200 feet.
Yes, it's 200 feet, it's listed on sheet C 3.1.
So, somewhere in the materials, it was highlighted that, that it doesn't have the appropriate frontage on Wood Street, and that was somehow a problem? It's not a problem?
It has the appropriate frontage on-
Mechanic Street, right.
Mechanic Street, I will double-check that to make sure.
I may have misread the materials, I thought that that was a difficulty to overcome.
It was mentioned, it was in the memo, or it was in?
It was in the-
Somewhere. It was somewhere. Asking me exactly-
I always read the same thing.
We do the tower of Florida.
Okay.
Okay, that's what it was.
Okay.
That's something I can look into.
Yeah, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to figure, figure that out for sure, but that's part of the Beta's review that you have not seen yet. Okay. So, John, is that it for you?
Yes.
Okay. So, Phil, I'm gonna ask our, our engineer to go up and give us his top level.
So, just by way of introduction, Steve Borgarty works for Beta. He also has done a number of solar facilities himself.
Okay.
So, he's, he did the primary review of this, and I'd like to give an offer of the kind of agenda.
Perfect, welcome.
Yeah, thank you. So, I'm going to try to, there's a number of comments on this project, I'll try to stick to the main ones, just in just of time, and if there's any questions on specific top, specific items, I'd be happy to answer them or add more detail. The first comment is related to the equipment area proposed at 5 Mechanic Street. That's that storage area that's in that former garage right by Wood Street.
Yep.
The regulations require that any portion of the array have sufficient visual buffer, I think it's something like 75-foot minimum, though it might be able to be waived by the board. But that equipment specifically will be pretty readily visible from anywhere around Wood Street, just based on what I've seen with the existing tree cover is. They might not need to provide, you know, 54 tree buffer, but maybe something there, based on the board's opinion.
Okay.
The second comment is related to Article 31, the solar installation bylaw, subsection H, which stipulates that the applicant try to minimize the amount of vegetative clearing to the extent possible.
Yep.
Obviously, you need to do cleaning for the array, but the applicant is proposing clearing in buffer zones and close to resource areas, which you want to minimize to the extent possible. There's a question of if all of the clearing that they're doing is necessary, and typically with these projects, we include a shading analysis to show that any area they're clearing is having a, is having an actual impact on the array's ability to generate power. The next comment is from the stormwater management permit, SW 4. The applicant is proposing to regrade the site. Any steep slopes are going to be regraded to a slope of 20% or less, but there's no actual proposed contours on the plans, and it's based on the amount of steep slopes, anticipated that there'll be a pretty significant amount of regrading, which can have an impact on erosion control and stormwater runoff and all that stuff. So, we'd like to see a more detailed depiction of what they're actually proposing to put in this array. Next comment is SW 6. The applicant needs to provide a watershed plan showing pre- and post-development drainage areas. Essentially, their analysis treats the project as one single catchment area, but it actually should be runoff going to the east and to the west and to the south and possibly to the north, so we'd like to see a breakdown of those different areas and how the grading and different cover types are going to affect them. The next one is comment SW 9. The hydrologic calculations they provided are really just the first step in a stormwater management report, especially for a project of this size. There's a number of requirements in the stormwater management bylaw, but in general, we'd like to see time of concentration, peak discharge rate, runoff volumes, different cover types, really how the project's actually going to affect the area, rather than just comparison of different areas. We'd also like to see that applied to the different catchment areas, rather than the project as a whole. The next comment is SW 34 relating to TSS removal. For a project like this, there's usually not too many sediment loads, since there's not really any impervious areas proposed, except for the access road. There's some concern that any runoff from the access road might carry sediment, especially into the resource areas in Whitehall Brook nearby. So, we'd like to see some kind of mitigation measures, such as a swale alongside the road, a berm, something like that, to keep any sediment from tracking into those resource The next few comments is SW 35, SW 39. It's related to erosion control. In general, the erosion control plan is proposing mulch tubes in certain areas around the perimeter of the array, but it might not be sufficient, especially for a project of this size, to actually control the amount of sedimentation you'd expect. So, we'd like to see possibly a draft stormwater pollution prevention plan, some more erosion controls, maybe a construction sequencing plan, just to make sure that, especially given the past use as a gravel pit, there's not going to be too much erosion into those resource areas. And then finally, it's mentioned in the narrative, we didn't have a copy of the notice of intent, which I believe has since been submitted to the town, so that wasn't included in our So, there is, the applicant is proposing impacts to buffer zones, seems to be outside of resource areas, but we definitely need to make sure that those, I suppose that Concom will touch on it, that those areas are being managed. Besides that, that's the limit of, if there's any questions on what I've said or anything else I have.
No, I appreciate that a lot, and typically, what we would see, the sooner you get comments back to Beta, they are very good about getting responses back, and so, to maximize your efficiency at your next hearing is to facilitate getting the information to them in response, so you get that back and forth. Will you speak to the zoning? Was it in, was it in your review?
Yes, well, the, the general comment was, frontage needs to be off, from what I understand of the zoning bylaw, frontage needs to be at least 200 feet off of a road with a right-of-way. Part of the problem is Mechanic Street, at least based on the GIS maps that the town has, doesn't actually have a right-of-way. It seems to be included in actually one of the lots they're proposing. So, it really comes down to the town, I suppose, you know, whether that's really a problem, if the frontage is really an issue in the zoning board, but that's the main gist of the problem. There's no frontage on Wood Street, and Mechanic Street doesn't have a right-of-way, so it's unclear if it actually counts towards fulfilling that frontage requirement.
Okay, I appreciate you bringing that point up, thank you so much. I'm sure we'll see you again. I would recommend that you speak to the zoning enforcement officer on that issue, at least get the basics of your, your information and your argument in place, and, you know, if he's satisfied, if it's simple and he's satisfied, it's likely we're satisfied as well.
I'd love to do that, thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, so, we have just a few minutes. This would be the time for, I'm gonna use this time for the public to come forward with any comments in particular to add to the detail of what we will discuss, to make sure that we speak about whatever might be most concerning or most apropos to you. So, if there are members of the public who came tonight to speak in particular to help shape the agenda, please feel free to come forward. You might, yeah, you might listen, yeah. Hi, Chief.
Good evening. Just a point of interest to the presentation is, he mentioned a storage facility, and I don't know that I face that in what we've done in our other projects so far that I've reviewed for you. So, it kind of, I'd just like to get the information a little bit deeper in that, it didn't really, it didn't jump out at me in the plans that I saw so far, and the uniqueness of that, of this being a commercial property, but we kind of had some leeway, just because it's been the, the solar arrays, but if you start putting storage facilities and it really becomes, falls under- But if you start putting storage facilities and it really becomes, falls under what, 527 CMR covers in facilities and access roads and water supply and fire protection systems. So I'm just kinda curious, you know, let's jump in the gun a little bit until I see what's there, but it seems that that's a little different than what I've seen in the other projects.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? You might as well just let... Mr. Larder, how are you?
First of all, the...
Just introduce yourself and your address.
230 Wood Street. I also own half of Mechanic Street. And I found out about this in my mail when I got home from vacation today. So the left half of the road, I own. Where they're planning this structure may fall within the Woodville Historic District Commission. It's gonna be like right on the line, so it would have to go through them, too.
So I will put that on the... Outline, yep.
So there's a line for historic structures, we can just change it to historic.
Yep. Yep, perfect. The other issue certainly plays. It's not an issue that we necessarily get to decide, so that is gonna be... That's gonna be something that, you know, the applicant and neighbors need to figure out together.
So can I just request that this packet be sent to the Woodville Historic District Chair, just so they can review it?
Yeah, that's a good idea. Anything else you wanna add to the agenda?
No, I originally came because I was concerned about wetlands. Now I know I'm going to have a building outside of my kitchen window.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Take care. Anybody else? All right, when is our next time to hear this?
August 12th.
So we'll end, I'll enter, we're gonna go ahead and wrap it up at this point. And then we'll start with planning board members adding to the agenda when we reconvene. So I will entertain a motion to continue this public hearing to August 22nd.
Before we do that, should we schedule a sit walk?
Oh, yes, thank you. I had it on my list and went right by it. Thank you. Yes, so we do like to do a sit walk. And for the members of the public, all members of the public that are interested in this, the sit walk is not, we do post it, 'cause very often we have a majority of the planning board members there. It's not part of the hearing process. We don't take testimony. We don't take detailed, ask or answer detailed questions. But certainly getting a walkabout and to see exactly what it is we're contemplating and exactly where others, other structures are and how it might impact and play is very valuable. So we very often do them on Saturday mornings at 9 o'clock. What's a Saturday that works for people? Ugh, summer. This is when we get out our calendars, yes?
4:00.
20th works.
I don't mind 8 o'clock either. The 20th. I am available on the 20th.
Show of hands, available.
I'll go out myself.
Okay.
It's fine.
Are you available if we go earlier?
It's okay.
I'm not sure. I have a...
Okay.
I gotta check.
Earlier is not great.
Okay, are you available on the 20th?
Yeah.
Oh, you are? Okay. So we'll stick with 9? And then maybe, you'll let us know, or you'll try and drop out there with Deb? Okay, all right. So can we schedule a sit walk for July 20th at 9 o'clock? And where should we plan to park and meet?
If you follow the private way down to the project area, right in the beginning of the gravel pit, we can all meet up there. Right where the trees, you know, where it opens up.
All right, so we'll start at 9, and you folks will be standing there with big broad smiles, so we'll know where we're going, right?
Right.
All right.
Yeah, we said 9.
9, yeah. How long do you think we need for the walk? It's a big area. What do you think?
No, definitely no, definitely no more than that.
Okay, so we'll plan on, we'll plan on having an hour available. Okay. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
And then we should entertain the motion to continue.
Chair, before you conclude, the Stormwater Management Permit needs a decision by O.S. Pitts, so we would need to request a continuation.
So, yes, the decision on the Stormwater Management Permit, we would need the applicant's agreement that we can have an extended deadline on that to at least the 19th, August 19th.
Okay, that's fine.
I just wanted to know, I looked at the Woodville Historic District map, and the whole Wood Street in that area, both sides, is in the Historic District? So if things can be seen from the street, it seems like they would be under there?
It will be, it will be.
We'll definitely take a look at that overlay.
Thank you, Amy.
Thanks, thank you.
Yeah, just a real quick question.
You can.
So you had mentioned, so just in effect, we tried to not to have new utility poles, and try to keep it like net zero, but you mentioned that you might be able to go under a water pipe?
Yeah, there's a water easement that runs basically along the southern or southeastern border there and kind of west. So in that area, we're going to try and work...
So you need to do some more research? Is there like a 50% chance that you may be able to go under it, or just roughly?
Not sure what percentage.
Okay, so you'll get back to us.
I gotta talk with the easement owner and see if that, they might balk at that, you know, make us go over.
I just wanted to let you know that the overground, you know, utilities is, if we can get away with them. What's that?
We've got that on the agenda.
Yeah, but they're fairly warned that it's a big deal.
Just a verbal heads up.
I would actually like to ask for the planning board's support to get the chairman, if he is interested and willing, the chair of the board, the select board, I'm having a hard time with all these new terms, the select board chair and myself and John and Norman to speak with the town attorney and understand the 61A implications more completely. All right, so if we can try and set something up, John. On a Tuesday afternoon, when you guys are already here, you know, later in the day, I know Brendan is typically available after 4 best, and I am best available after 4:30, just if we could aim for the evening.
Sorry, one more.
Say it again?
I'll check with town council.
That'd be great.
One quick question about 61A, perhaps you know the answer. So is it any property over 10 acres?
No, no. Chapter 61A, chapter 61A is a specific protection that...
Oh, better tax rate, right?
Yes.
So people apply for it.
Yeah, so it's very often a large tractable property that is wooded. For some reason, it's an attractive piece of property. Or it's a farm or an orchard, and it is to enable, empower the landowner to keep it in its natural state, utilizing it as a farmer, keep a tree.
Just surprising that this would any of the other solar farms, big acreage.
Yeah, yeah, just in that movie.
We should keep moving.
Thanks, Dan.
We have a lot to do.
Yep, no, you're right. Okay, so we're gonna get more information on that for sure. Thank you very much. So the motion is for the 22nd with the decision to be the 29th on the, what's the decision?
19th.
The Stormwater Management Permit decision?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye. Hang on.
Yep.
The meeting's August 12th, not the 22nd.
The decision, oh, thank you. August 12th.
And the decision's the 19th.
And the decision is the 19th.
Keeping the promise of one meeting.
At 7:30. Say it again?
Is that keeping the promise of one meeting?
That's the, is that one meeting in office? Anyway.
I have a motion, is there a second or a third?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
For the 12th.
For the 12th?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'll check. All right, so we have, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Just so I am clear, we're continuing to the 12th, not the 23rd.
12, yes, I'm sorry for the confusion. That's all me.
12th of August.
And the decision is for the 19th, yes. Thank you, August 12th.
Thank you.
I might need a nap or something, I don't know. Okay, so next on our agenda is... Is the administrative piece, and I say we go straight to the Growth Study Committee interviews. Can I ask, because I don't know everybody that applied, are people here for the interviews? I know one person is. Are people here for the Growth Study Committee interviews? Well, Fran, come on down!
Who's this guy?
Chair.
It's good to see your face.
See everybody, board members?
Thank you for applying. So on a process perspective, are we, we have two members of the planning board who have put statements of interest forward. We know that our two appointees from the chamber are Finn Perry and Chuck Joseph. And we have three at-large statements of interest. And Fran is one of them. So thank you for coming, and tell us just a tiny bit about yourself and why you'd like to be on the committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Francis Deion, 3 Doyle Lane. I am interested in serving on this committee to be able to help support the planning board in the broader efforts, putting together a plan of action, looking and assessing past growth and identifying opportunities for future growth. I think my background, serving on the planning board as well as the ZAC, gives me, I think, a unique perspective to be able to work with other boards and to be able to contribute back to the community and back to this board as well.
So just as in full disclosure, I heavily recruited Fran, so I want my yes. But I don't know how other people feel.
I would've done it anyway, Madam Chair. It's a pleasure to be able to serve.
No gifts were exchanged.
None at all.
Does anybody have any questions or comments?
I mean, Fran would do a great job.
Yep.
So, sorry, just from a process perspective, so we have...
Two people we don't see.
Two people we all see. We have three at-large positions.
Yes, we do.
We have three applicants for the at-large positions.
That's correct. Yep, I am, I am really interested in having Fran, so I'm, you know, I entertain a motion to appoint Fran to the committee.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? Thank you so much.
Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Really, it's really could be, I think it's gonna be great work, to be honest with you.
I'm excited. I think there's a lot of good work to be done and a lot of good work to be able to share back.
Finn and Chuck are amazing resources, and I think that they're gonna bring a lot, so...
I think it's gonna be fun.
Yeah. Do you have a preference on meeting nights, seeing you're here and...
I'm very flexible. If I'm in town, I'm here. If I'm on the road, I can dial in.
Okay, 'cause that's one of the things we're gonna kinda think about. Thank you very much.
Good luck, everybody.
I really appreciate that you jumped on. So process point, did we, do we know if we, that we communicated clearly that there were gonna be interviews tonight?
We put in the advertisement that interviews were gonna be at this meeting, and we strongly recommended that they would attend.
Yeah, okay.
Didn't we get a few other members at large? Did we get them kind of late?
Just today.
Yeah, so we got one Friday night and one yesterday.
Yes, maybe give them another opportunity and another meeting. Can we do that?
So was there any acknowledgement or any, like, you know, in their submission? I mean, I think you forwarded the emails themselves, but, you know, I guess I'm just a little concerned that they didn't, there wasn't even an effort to say, "I'm sorry, I can't make the meeting on Monday." I mean, I agree with Deb. I'd be more comfortable deferring until they actually can come to a planning board meeting myself. I wouldn't...
I'm happy to invite them to come to the next meeting, the interview, absolutely.
It does delay when we can start our work.
It does, although we could, we could potentially invite the members that we know are part of it just to begin meeting, and that would be a piece of information that applicants could react to, whether they were gonna be able to support that meeting day and time. I don't know.
And I guess it's no different than having, you know, open, open position, open...
Yeah.
It's just we need to have at least a quorum appointed so that they could have a meeting.
Which we do already, right? Well, if we appoint you and I, if we are appointed successfully.
I think that's the right course of action, just...
Then we have two, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's just proceeding but not appointing until there's some conversation, like, that just makes sense.
Okay, that sounds good.
Do we need to vote Amy and I?
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second, okay. Any discussion?
Do we need to vote together, or do we need to vote separately?
I think you can vote together, to be honest with you. And a reminder that there's two alternate seats, too, right? Didn't we establish it so that there'd be two alternate seats specifically for interested planning board members if they wanted to jump on, or did we define it?
I'm sure we defined it.
I don't know if we did.
We didn't define it.
We did not define it, it's just alternate seats.
There could be that one position.
Okay, so they could be planning board members, or they could be members at large. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
John, so... No, unless you can vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? Okay, thank you. Yes.
So just to clarify, in fairness's sake, since the two applicants were past the deadline...
No, didn't we have it? What was the deadline?
Friday at 5:00.
Friday at 5:00? Ah, I had it in my head that it was today at 5:00, okay.
Should we continue to accept applicants if they were to come in?
Yes, I don't think that there's another way to do that. Thank you for pointing that out. I didn't, I didn't really realize that. I missed that detail. So yes, so when would we continue to accept, we should post that, that we're continuing to accept applicants?
Make a motion to continue it to the next meeting, right, the deadline? So the issue is, I guess, if we post a position, it probably has to be in the newspaper or in the advertisement for 10 days, like the previous one?
Right, I think you're right. So that would be the first meeting in August, would be the soonest we could do it?
The 12th.
12th. I think that that's, I mean, from a process perspective, it's the only way to do it. So we're gonna post that...
It's 14 days away that our next meeting is, right? So why wouldn't we go?
Just getting it out might not, so it would be...
It's also 10 business days.
Okay.
And it would be getting the applications by that day, which would not give us a lot of time, so it's getting the actual notice out.
But I'm in favor of getting the notice out and having it, you know, a fixed 10 days out and having whatever date that is, that you post it 10 business days out and have that be the deadline. And then we have the applications in before the 12th. Does that sound?
Or the Friday before the meeting, right? Wouldn't have to be exactly 10 days.
Well, how about the Tuesday before the meeting, seeing we have plenty of time? And we usually do Tuesdays. I'm fine with that. Tuesday before the, so the typical deadline for our meetings. Okay, awesome.
So on that topic, do, does that, do we want to establish an initial meeting for the newly accepted members of the Growth Committee, or do we wanna wait until we have a...
I would like to aim at something if we can, but we have to reach out. Fran's still here, nice. And he is, he's available. He's flexibly available.
As Chamber of Commerce.
Chamber of Commerce reps, right. So if it's possible to meet on alternate Monday nights from the planning board...
We have Zach on Monday nights, too.
I'm not on Zach.
We're not on Zach.
I staff Zach.
You staff Zach. Yes, but... Are you hankering for an extra meeting to go to?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily. So I think we could start without necessarily professional staff, 'cause we don't have the kind of detailed minutes when we're starting. And I wasn't necessarily, and I think, I wasn't necessarily thinking we were just gonna add to your plate as far as attending meetings. Does that sound?
I don't feel like I have time to take notes. This is in a minute's...
Yep, yep. Well, so we can meet, and then we can sort of figure out if it's gonna be possible. Is that, does Mondays, I'm only picking Monday because it's the night we set aside anyway?
Yeah, Monday, I'm available Monday.
Okay. So do you mind reaching out to our two compatriots on the Chamber of Commerce? And seeing if we can begin, 'cause it would have to be posted?
To the 15th or the 29th?
So you'd have to reach them tomorrow. Today we'll post it for the 15th. When's our next meeting? 22nd, right? Well, if we can do it for the 15th, post it for the 15th, if you can reach them, if they're available. And if we can't, then we go to the 29th. Of course, it all falls apart if they're not available on Monday nights. Of course, it all falls apart if they're not available on Monday nights.
So, Fran, you can make it either the fifteenth or the twenty-ninth? Okay.
Awesome, thank you.
So, whichever is better for the other two, then, I guess, is fine.
Yep, yep, perfect. And then just leave us know, so we don't skip it.
And we need to ask...
They'll both respond tomorrow.
And should I just make the agenda? Would you, I guess, would you like to meet here? Where would you like to meet? Anywhere that's known.
Is there any place that has air conditioning? I'm just asking you.
Are we allowed to meet here?
Go to the library.
Actually, the conference table up in the third floor probably is there.
Yeah, if that's, if that spot is available and there is air conditioning, let's try for that, that would be great. Thank you.
Yeah, that should be okay.
Because I'm about to die.
And can we specifically tell Shai Joel and Pavina that we're gonna meet, or that they should come to the next meeting, the twelfth? The two applicants, if they could come to the, to both...
To the twenties, to the...
To the meeting where we're gonna have...
The twelfth, on August twelfth, yes.
The August twelfth meeting?
Yes, for appointments.
And they should probably also consider coming.
Well, you can tell them when we're meeting, too, they can come and watch, they just wouldn't be...
Be able to vote, yeah.
I'd be strongly encouraged.
And the other thing is, anybody who's been appointed has to be sworn in.
Oh.
For, yeah. That just jumped into my head.
Is there any kind of draft agenda you guys can think of, or is it just gonna be introductory discussion? We can talk about this offline, too.
Yeah, but you do need a draft agenda. Yeah. Well, tomorrow, we'll be, we'll be quick about that. Okay, awesome. Maybe, let's do it now. Timeline, top-level organization of the committee, meeting dates and times going forward, and who's gonna take the minutes.
Elect a chair.
And a discussion about the, the mission statement and, and what our task is and roles.
Do we need to appoint Finn Perry and Chuck Joseph, or they're just...
No, they're, they are appointed by the chamber. Does that sound, does that, does that work? At least we had, because we, we do have to post an agenda in order to be posting the meeting, so, and that will give us plenty to talk about. Okay, perfect, thank you. Okay, what is next?
Should we do the A and Rs?
Yeah.
I know we have to do those tonight, right?
Yeah, walk us through what we have to get done.
So, we have to get done the Nineteen John Matthew Road A and R, the Leonard Street A and R, the Three Hundred Wood Street A and R, and I...
And the Nine Morse.
Think we have to get the Nine Morse Street as well.
Well, okay, let's not skip those. Can we just make the quick announcement about the Mass DOT public forum? Dave, you were like right on the game there.
Yeah, so it's funny.
Getting the conversation in front of us, yeah. So, for the public, I actually had a neighbor ask me about it, and so for the public, there are public forums this week on the proposed I-90, I-495 interchange work. One, go ahead.
Sorry, I talked to the person who's organizing it, and that's an invite-only forum. The general public forum is gonna take place on July twenty-fifth at Town Hall.
The, okay, thank you.
So, there were...
What is that?
The DOT.
Right, and so those were, he clarified, he said those were for invitation stakeholders only.
Okay, even the one at six-thirty here at the Town Hall basement on Thursday?
On Thursday? Yeah, I believe so.
Because he, I did email him, and he responded, and...
We were invited though.
It may just be, if you know about it, he'll stay okay, because you only know about it because of an invite, because of the letter Amy got. But I, I emailed him today, and I asked him if there was any other information publicly available, and he said it was only for invite-only, and the July twenty-fifth.
So, when is the public invited to attend?
July twenty-fifth.
At what time?
I will find it.
Yep. So, this is a conversation about the approaches that they are contemplating to address the safety slowdown problematic interchanges I-90 and I-495, and particularly people who live out on the end of Fruit Street in the Roosevelt Farms or the Huckleberry, I think, might have more interest in knowing what, what plans are being considered.
So, it's, so it actually might be the one that you, I think you were referencing, that's in the basement, but it's on July twenty-fifth at six-thirty?
Six-thirty PM in the Hopkinton Town Hall basement?
Correct. Six-thirty to eight-thirty.
Maybe the email that Amy sent just had the wrong date on it.
No, I, I've been getting letters from them all along as a stakeholder, like E-HOP is considered a stakeholder somehow, so I'm not sure how that happened, but I've been getting letters over the years.
I wonder if they just changed the date, and there's really nothing...
You gotta get, you gotta get connected, like Amy's connected, that's all I'm saying.
So, I think someone from E-HOP will go to one of those, then.
So, so...
Possible I could get on the invite for Wednesday?
So, I, I responded, like I was being welcomed. I responded that I was going to attend the Thursday at six-thirty, and I'm going. They said, "Great, we'd love to have you." So, I'm gonna be attending that one.
I'll forward you the email, because I just said I'm a Hopkinton resident member of the planning board, like to attend, and the title of the email was Four-Ninety-Five Mass Pike Project Public Input Session. He responded, "Thanks for your RSVP. The meeting will address the results of the advances in the design efforts as well as public input since the second round of public outreach last fall."
For Thursday, or...
That's for this Thursday.
The one on Wednesday is at one?
Two o'clock.
One. The one on Thursday is at six-thirty?
And do you know where that is?
It says it's in the Town Hall basement.
Not the one on Wednesday?
Oh, and the one on Wednesday is five McAdam Road.
So, do you know where McAdam is?
I'm not going to Wednesday, so I don't...
So, Tuesdays is the twenty-third, is what you're, or that was the public session?
The twenty-fifth, July twenty-fifth at six-thirty PM is the one in Hopkinton Town Hall basement, is the one that is open to the general public for anybody who's listening at home.
And I have heard concerns from Rocky Woods neighborhood, too, so I think those, those neighbors will be going.
I would imagine how people would be interested, so...
So, that, that's the most convenient one to everybody here, but there's also one July thirtieth in Hudson?
Okay. You know what, we should just, at our next meeting, if we could have all the sessions in the packet so that people can get to them?
Okay.
That'd be great. Okay. Alrighty, thank you. So, walk us through Nineteen John Matthew Road.
All right, so, this is a, an A and R.
Please don't.
If Joe has some information on it.
Hey, Joe.
Get in.
So, this, as a condition of the Board of Appeals' decision regarding the building lot at Nineteen John Matthew Road, they require that the building lot have the minimum lot size of sixty thousand square feet for the underlying zoning district. A piece of other land on Parcel A would be transferred from the Zero Elizabeth Road parcel to the Nineteen John Matthew Road building lot. Both Zero Elizabeth Road and Parcel A are labeled as non-buildable lots.
Okay. Excuse me. Appears entitled to endorsement, okay. Do you wanna say anything about it?
Yeah, I think John summarized it pretty well.
Okay. Any questions or concerns from the board? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the A and R Nineteen John Matthew Road.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions?
Great, there you go. Thank you very much.
All right, I'm gonna scamper down to Three Hundred Wood Street.
That's not helpful. The proposed subdivision is to create two conforming lots, both with frontage on Wood Street. The two lots will have required a lot area and frontage required by the residents in a district in which it is located. The plan appears to be entitled to endorsement.
So, say that again, two buildable lots, then? Okay.
If I can rotate this somehow.
All right. Any questions? Is the applicant here?
Correct.
He just came in.
Does, it looks like there's an existing building that's gonna be close to the lot line?
Correct.
It says, I think it says garage to be raised.
So, the A and Rs, the only, the only criteria that needs to meet is frontage and lot size?
Okay.
So, the endorsement of the planning board does not constitute consistent to a zoning?
I'm fine.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the A and R for Three Hundred Wood Street.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay. And then the A and R for Nine Morse Lane.
So, the proposed subdivision is to create a new conforming lot as well as a non-buildable lot on Morse Street. The non-buildable lot will eventually be combined with the adjacent lot, resulting in no net increase of lots. The plan appears entitled to endorsement.
So, say that again, so we're gonna, that, that non-conforming lot is gonna be combined with the triangle?
So, correct, so...
And that will be a buildable lot, right? Yeah.
So, if I, if I have this correctly, the, the triangle lot is a separate lot?
Yep.
And then the oddly-shaped...
Lot is a separate lot.
Lot is a separate lot.
I gotcha.
They're gonna cut the bottom portion off of the building and leave the back, very oddly-shaped lot as a non-buildable lot. And then eventually, the triangle lot and the other lot will create, will be combined into one lot, making that kind of up over.
I gotcha, but no net increase in lots.
Right, because they're taking it from one and...
Yep, yep. Okay. Welcome.
Thank you.
Introduce yourself and...
So, I'm Ray Kapaviano.
Joseph Kapaviano is my son.
And you live where?
I'm, so currently at Nine...
Currently at Nine Morse Lane.
Yep.
He owns Seven Morse Lane.
Okay. So, you're making two lots for, yep. Okay, awesome, lucky you. Anybody have any questions or concerns? I will entertain a motion to approve the A and R for Nine Morse Lane.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? See that? All set, thank you. Thanks for your patience.
Thank you.
All right, I'm just gonna do the minutes for June tenth. I'll entertain a motion on the minutes for June tenth.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the minutes as written? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, perfect, thanks again, Kobe, awesome job. Alrighty, so the one, the last thing we have to do tonight is Leonard Street A and R, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay, so let's do that next.
Sorry, are we gonna go back to Buckland?
Yes, same.
Which one am I talking about?
The A and R for Leonard Street.
So, the Leonard Street A and R does not propose to alter or change any lot lines, boundaries, or other aspects of the property. Does show Buckland Street as a way, which the planning board has determined not to be the case. We've got a memo from Town, or email from Town Council, and I will read the portion that they suggested. So, the question was, "Does the plan submitted by Wall Street dated June twelfth qualify for endorsement as approval not required under MGL Chapter forty-one eighty-one, Section eighty-one P? The answer from Town Council is no. August two thousand and eighteen, Wall Street submitted a similar plan. I informed Wall Street's counsel, Chris Timson, that my firm would advise the planning board not to endorse the plan because it appears to show Buckland Street as a way currently in existence, and thus endorsement by the planning board would appear to make Lot One currently buildable lot, which it is not, because Buckland Street does not in fact currently exist on the ground. Pointed out to Attorney Timson that if Wall Street wished to record a plan confirming existential parcel boundaries, it could rely on the provisions of MGL Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one X, allowing recording of a plan bearing a certificate by a registered land surveyor attesting to the necessary facts." And I got an email from Rebecca Lacy, Town Council, shortly after this, that said, after that was made, they withdrew the A and R. Just for...
Who withdrew?
Attorney Timson.
So, the, the last, the last application?
Not this one, not that.
Oh, yeah.
That's the last one, yeah.
After that termination was made on the previous A and R.
Right, right.
Okay.
So, you wanna talk about that?
Yeah.
Okay, just quickly on the A, on the A and R, I mean, this, it's not meant for a intention of declaring a way in existence. Leonard Street is a way in existence and has been a way in existence, and Buckland Street is a way that predates the subdivision control law. So, I think either way, back when we first started this process, we had submitted an A and R plan, and we had conversations with Town Council that, and it showed lots at that time, the division of the lots. So, at that time, we, we wanted to cooperate with the town and not put them under any deadlines to sign it or make a decision at that time, so we withdrew that plan at that time. So, now, we're just basically showing the lot as, as it presently exists. One lot with frontage on Leonard Street and frontage on Buckland Street. And regardless of what happens during this process with the various applications we have planned, we're still entitled under chapter one-eighty-five, Section Five, to build the roadway for access in some point in the future, if we resolve all of our other civil disagreements with the two neighbors, so, or we can access from Leonard Street. So, either way, I think it's, the plan is a plan.
Okay.
But I, I don't wanna, if we have limited time, I'd rather focus on the Buckland Street.
Well, we have to decide it tonight and, and notify you, because the decision is due, right?
Tomorrow.
So...
Say that again?
The decision is due tomorrow.
Right, well, I can extend that. I'd rather focus on where we were for Buckland Street.
Just, just one thought, I don't, I don't know if this is worth opening up, but the guidance that we got from Town Council is pretty clear, and I'm inclined to follow that, so personally, I'm probably ready to vote. I don't know where other people are on it, but...
I am as well.
Yep, I agree.
Okay, well, we'll just appeal it and go.
Yep.
I think, I don't think really Town Council understands what we submitted, because we've had several meetings with them prior to, during the past twelve months, and I'm quite sure that they understand that this is a pre-existing lot with frontage.
Okay. It seemed pretty clear that they were pretty on their game, but that is a question for them. I'll entertain a motion, yes?
Sorry, just based on Mr. Petrosi's comments, I mean, the other option is, you know, at his request, we could extend it, and you can reach out to.
Yeah.
Town council?
Town council and.
I'd prefer that would be a more.
Well, that makes better sense to me too.
If you think there's a disconnect, then.
Yeah, I think, I think there is a disconnect.
Alright, so let's, um, let's see, when is the next time we would be able to see?
August twelfth.
August twelfth again, okay. So let's extend that, the decision on the, uh, A and R, if you're amenable, to, um, August nineteenth?
Sure, fine, thank you.
If you can for, are you able to forward me that email so that I can send it?
There should be a copy over there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I can, I can also forge it here.
Yeah, yeah, no, I just, that way that's two attorneys.
I just wanna confirm that you can actually extend the deadline for an A and R?
Okay. Uh, do you wanna take, while John is looking at that, you wanna take us back?
So we left off at, uh, on the fourth requested waiver of, I don't know, do you have to open up the hearing again or no?
Nope, we continued it.
Okay, so, uh, Section eight, point two, point two, point A, uh, granite curbing. So we, um, you know, this roadway was designed as a rural roadway with, uh, low-impact drainage features. We're not proposing any, uh, curbing on the roadway. And, uh, so, especially on the radiuses or, um, so we requested a waiver for that curbing. And, um, the following waiver plays into that with, uh, eight point two, point two, point C, modified Cape Cod berm, no Cape Cod berm, and no granite curbing. So it's basically a rural street design. Uh, the roadway is tilted so that all the water runs into a drainage well that's on the plan. So there are, so strictly no curbing on the roadway.
Any comments from the board? Dave?
Um, I'm a big fan of the berm, but I'm just trying to think through how it fits in with the stormwater trench.
If we don't want anything draining to the north side, that's the way it's, it's oriented, you know, is to drain to the south side.
So.
Couldn't there be a curb on the?
The way it's, the way the roadway is designed is, you know, we have a series of drainage wells along the side of the road. There's no pipe in the ground like you would a conventional pipe system. So in order to keep water from entering onto the north side of the property, the roadway is tilted. And the water is sheet flows across into the drainage wells. And there's a infiltration trench, I think, along the side of the road. So, curbing, um, would interfere with that, in a way the drainage is currently designed. Am I explaining that correctly? And so, um, if, if we, if curbing were, if, let's say a Cape Cod berm were to be required by the, the board, the drainage system wouldn't work as it's designed. Because it would interfere with the flow going across the street, going across. Um, and there really isn't any need to put a berm on the north side, um, because that water is going south across the roadway. To do a Cape Cod berm, you'd have to widen the road another foot in order for the berm to be installed. Or, we proposed a twenty-foot, uh, paved way, so, or the way would have to be nineteen feet so that you have a foot to install a berm on the north side of the roadway. So, um, that's the reason why we're not proposing any curbing, uh, to make the drainage work better.
So.
Yeah.
Two questions, one, can you just confirm, how is this parcel currently zoned?
Um, a, what was it, a fifteen thousand square foot, hundred-foot frontage?
Is it an A property?
Residential A.
Residential A? So, so I guess just one point on that, like, I, I don't know if residential A necessarily means rural?
No, no, I, what's defined in your regulations is based on how many houses, so the minimum width of a travelway. And then, um, rural, it's defined here, rural is twenty feet, and then in your things, it's ten or less cars, is how they define the, the pavement. You know, I'm just using this.
Yeah.
It's defined as a rural road because it only has four proposed homes on it. And that's kind of what the definition, uh.
So I think it's through the chair.
Do you know where it is?
Through the chair, it's all ties in together because.
Yeah.
The eight point two, point three, point A that he's, he wants a waiver on, um, the right-of-way.
Yeah.
Is supposed to be forty feet minimum.
Yeah.
So I mean, if he's making a twenty-foot road, he should have ten feet on each side right-of-way.
Yeah.
Except, except that we don't have a right-of-way that's that, like, we only, we have a variable width right-of-way that's maybe thirty feet in some areas and twenty-eight feet in other areas.
But he owns the property.
What, what constrains your width?
The right-of-way.
What, what can, yeah, what constrains the, the right-of-way?
The stone walls.
Stone, there's stone walls on both sides?
Yes, yes.
I don't remember stone walls on both sides.
I don't either, I don't either.
Well, that's how, that's how we arrived at these, um.
This is not a scenic road, the stone walls should not.
Well, I, so it's not, it's not, it's not a road.
Right.
We, we're not saying it is a scenic road, but we're just using the definitions that are in here that fit into the category.
So, so my take on it to the chair.
Yes.
Is I, 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 I would be willing to compromise on the curbing on the south side because that's stormwater. But on the north side, I think there should be a curb, there should be a sidewalk, there should be a right-of-way that's standard for all the other roads, um.
Okay, and Mary?
I agree with David. I feel like a curb on the northern side would, would definitely do the protection of, you know, the wetlands. We're, you know, trying to make sure that it's all draining to the south, isn't that extra assurance that it would?
Well, there's no wetlands on the northerly side of the property.
But you want it not to drain there, correct?
Right.
Okay, so.
Well, we designed it so that everything drains there now.
Right.
We go ahead and, and do that, there just simply isn't any, if you're proposing that we put a berm and a sidewalk on the northerly side of the roadway, there just simply isn't any road.
But through the chair, shift the road over, it's all your property, right?
Yeah.
It, it's easier said than done, I mean, it's not easily done that way.
Alright, so we have two, just, just so you know, we have two votes that are currently for the roadway, sidewalks, and the curbing.
So, so I'm just gonna push back a little bit because I, I realize that Cape Cod berms would impact your storm drainage, but.
Not really, it wouldn't exist, the Cape Cod berm would impact, if it was installed on the southerly side, would impact it because it wouldn't allow water to sheet flow.
I, yes, that's, that's what I'm saying, but, but I guess my point is, is that that, that bylaw existed before you did your stormwater plan. So, to me, if I was designing the stormwater plan, I, I would've tried to accommodate as many of the bylaws as I, as I.
Well, I think we comply with your regulations, your stormwater bylaw, management bylaw, and mass DEP stormwater.
But you're telling me that Cape Cod berms would impact your stormwater plan?
If, it would, under those scenarios, we would then have to, uh, design a, some sort of, you know, gaps in the, in the berm to allow the water to enter into those basins. I mean.
Through the chair, I.
And plus the roadway would have to be.
Go to the rest of the way, but I'll come.
Roadway would have to be a foot wider on each side to accommodate a Cape Cod berm on each side, so. I mean, I, we can do the curbing if that's what you want, we just can't do the sidewalk. Sidewalk is, is, it's five, five more feet, plus two feet for, uh, so if you add the pavement width of twenty, you add the berm on each side, that's two more feet, that's twenty-two feet. Now you're gonna add five feet for a sidewalk, that's twenty-seven feet. And so this road isn't wide enough, especially in the first two hundred feet, it's not.
You're gonna be making the road though.
It's just not.
You're gonna be, you're gonna be constructing the road as a matter of practicality, so you can make it work. Amy?
No, I, I agree that, I think we need to have the, the berm and the curbing on the north side at least.
And the sidewalk?
And the sidewalk.
So that, it's, it's, you're, you're seeing the shape of the road, um, coming.
I, I understand, you can deny the waiver, we'll put the sidewalk in, but that doesn't, you know, it's a, I don't know how it's gonna get built that way, that's all, I'm trying to be completely honest with you.
Alright, so, just to clarify, clarify, it's either granite or it's Cape Cod? I mean, we're granting one of them.
Depends on the radius of the.
Did you say radius, because I mean.
We're gonna, we're granting one of them though, right?
Right, right.
Yeah, we're not having both.
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
Yeah.
Um, so in the interest of time, we're gonna be meeting again on August twelfth. Um, I just, to be sure, when we come back, we are going to decide the waivers on the curbing, for sure, the curbing, the, um, width of the road, the sidewalk. Um, and we should address at minimum the dead-end streets turnaround and how we feel about that. And we should know before then, in hard documentation, that you actually have the right to, um, to connect.
To Maple Street.
Yes, Maple Street extension.
Yeah, no, I spoke with them tonight.
Alright, so I'm gonna entertain a motion to, yes?
Do you wanna clarify the A and R process in this, or do you wanna do a separate?
Oh, I do wanna clarify the A and R.
So, I couldn't find anything in MGL stating that you are allowed to continue. And not being an attorney, I don't feel comfortable making a decision saying that that's okay without talking to town council. So my recommendation would be either make a determination on the A and R or request that he withdraw.
Yeah.
The A and R and submit it at a later time when everything is figured out.
Well, I'll cooperate, well, we'll throw off at the time, Amy.
Okay, okay.
No, we're not in any big rush here, so we wanna make sure we do it right and everything's out.
I appreciate that.
I just wanted to clarify that, we were talking about not the first two hundred and twenty-two feet when we.
Yes, thank you, no, not, and not the last couple hundred feet where, right, thank you, yep, yep.
Can I just ask one question on the sidewalk? I mean, I, I think, um, is there, is there an, I, um, I mean, there's four houses on the street, there's no, it doesn't, the sidewalk doesn't go anywhere. Is there a reason why you want a sidewalk for five hundred feet, because they certainly can't build it where the two neighbors are for the first two hundred feet, so just.
So we will, I, you can absolutely, you can absolutely ask that question, we can start with that one if you want. We're just in the interest of time, we have to wrap it up when we have somebody waiting, but you may start with that question if that's where, where you wanna start, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion, so we, the A and R has been withdrawn?
I, I don't know if you have to vote to allow it to be withdrawn, I don't know the process.
I will entertain a motion to ex, to allow the applicant to withdraw the A and R plan without prejudice.
So moved.
How about we waive the fee for the next submittal?
I am happy to waive the fee for the next submittal.
Yes.
Look at us go.
Just a few hundred dollars, but it's.
Very little bit counter.
It's something, um, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? I will entertain a motion to continue the public hearing, um, on the Paper Street, um, application and the stormwater permit, um, to the twenty-second, the twelfth of August. And the decision on the nineteenth. Sorry? So moved. Is that amenable to you, the decision being extended to the nineteenth? Alright, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, thank you.
Great, thanks very much.
Yes.
If you guys work later, I'd stay later.
No, 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 be gone. Sorry about that, thanks for your patience.
Thank you so much. It was close, it is hot in here. My name is Ken Marsters, this is my son Ken Junior, we're the developers of Highland Park. And we're in our final phase, we've been doing this since nineteen eighty-six. We actually introduced the open space bylaw to the town in nineteen eighty-six, so that's how old I am, okay?
Wow.
Um, we worked with John in, in January of, um, two thousand and eighteen, we, um, got a bond, Stony Brook Road, uh, we bonded the road. At the time, I only requested the ten lots be released. Uh, and the reason why I did that was because I thought if I only released ten lots, I would only have to pay taxes on the ten I released. Sometimes that happens, and, and then you wouldn't have to pay taxes on the remaining twelve. That would save me about seventy thousand dollars. Well, Hockington's really smart, they don't buy that. So I'm paying taxes on everything anyways.
Oh, I'm glad you heard that.
Yeah, you know, I've paid a lot of taxes in the last thirty-some odd years up here, let me tell you. Um, and that's okay, it's been a pleasure. Um, so we're here just to release the remaining twelve lots, um, on the bond that we had paid. Now, we did get a letter from Luckner, who's our engineer, suggesting that we increase the road bond five percent annually, which I think is a little outrageous. Because the road bond, what you do, a year and a half ago, we took the bond, we worked with Luckner, he came up with a number, we added twenty percent of that number and we paid that fee. Um, so I think to add, and he wanted, his math says five percent per year, it's been a year and a half, and he came up with ten percent, well, that's not my math anyways. So, you know, if you wanna increase the bond, can we negotiate a number, or do we even have to increase the bond at all? That's my, that's my request.
Um, he explained it pretty well.
Thank you.
I don't really have much to add. Um, that was the number Luckner came up with, he had a formula, he didn't really come up with, or give us a good reason as to why that was the formula. I assume it's an industry standard type thing, um, but it is up to the planning board to determine the bond, if they should.
How much is the bond?
So currently, they have paid four hundred thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Luckner has recommended the five percent increase, and I believe that was just for the five lots as well, because he did it on a per-lot basis, so now you.
Oh.
As, as much as I understand, if I understand, you're now requesting the other five lots, now it's gonna be ten total lots, so I think.
Another, we're requesting another seven lots.
Another, so it would be twelve total?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Yeah, twelve total.
So, all I'm saying is, Luckner's calculations, that bond addition would be higher. So if the board wants to follow that, we would have to recalculate that, and they would have to pay that har, higher bond if we were to go with that recommendation.
But keep in mind, whether we release five or twelve, and we're releasing the twelve now, so I don't have to go through this exercise again, it's the road. The amount, the amount of lots doesn't matter what the cost is for bond release, it's to do the whole road, and we have a whole formula here that's four hundred thousand dollars.
Uh, yeah, I have a tendency to commonsensively go along with that, it's a certain amount of money for the road to be repaired at the end of time. I don't have a real burning desire to add to the burden. What's the total bond we have now?
Four hundred thousand, two, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
And what's the length of the road?
About a mile.
I think, through the check, I'm gonna run, but the road is pretty much built, right?
It's, it's built.
It's built, it's built, it's, it's to repair it after construction is on.
It's to do, it's to do some catch basins, additional catch basins, some fencing we have to do with the rotten gun club and pavement.
So.
It's not much.
To your point though, is it, and to you, it is designed for the length of the road, not necessarily how many houses are built on it?
I'm guessing maybe this formula is taking into account the damage to the road that may come up per lot, I, I really don't know.
Yeah. But you're on hook for the whole road anyway.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna bond it and do it the whole road anyways.
I, I don't know, I'm open to people's, um, thoughts on that.
It's plenty of money, I mean, he, when we did a budget, he, he increased the budget, it's, it's in his writing, and then he added twenty percent to the budget, so there's more than enough money there. Um, you know, we've been doing this since nineteen eighty-six, I currently have a twenty thousand dollar road bond that the town owes me, that, it's been out there for twenty years, I haven't even collected it yet, you know.
This is a totally.
A good fart.
Totally subjective comment, but Highland Park is what I think is the best neighborhood in town as far as the way it's built and the way it looks.
Thank you.
Alright, does anybody have any, first of all, so here's the thing, we, it's the release of the lots and it's the bond decision, right? What's the bond release? I mean, we're not releasing the bond, it's whether we change it, oh, I'm in.
Right, whether we, whether we.
I'm combining these two things.
Here, whether we change it, right.
I'm combining these two things, okay. Alright, what's every, what's, it's, we're at six past. Release the lots.
Yep.
And no increase in the bond. Are you making that motion?
I move.
Second.
Alright, is there any further conversation?
I just have one more.
Yes.
Question, just for a point of reference, does anybody know what bond is for REC Hockington, Mastriani's development? Because that's about a mile long as well, and just as a point of comparison.
I, I can find out, but I, I don't know.
Okay, don't worry about it, I was just curious if it was consistent.
Uh, all those in favor? Aye, any opposed, any abstentions?
Opposed, okay.
Um, do you have a revised Form K?
Yes, I do.
Um, well, are you getting people to sign something, or are you?
Yeah, we need the board to sign this.
Um.
I need the votes again.
Motion.
Oh, yes.
Who and who?
Yes, so it was moved by Mary, seconded by Dave, everybody was a yes except for Deb, Deb's a no.
Oh, you're, you're the.
Just out of curiosity, I haven't been down that way in a while, have you started building any houses on that road?
Yeah, yeah, we've, um, we have four under construction right now, I'm not building all of them, which is pretty neat too.
So I'm just gonna remind Dave that we are past time, so he can, he can, he can pursue his priority.
I know, just get that signed, I'll shut up. I'll shut up.
I wanted to just shoot something out, Gary and I and, um, John, hold on a second, I, I will remember, are meeting, uh, do you need me for, to sign that?
So, do you wanna, yeah, everyone needs to sign it?
Yep, so don't anybody, and you need it before you go?
Sign it.
Oh.
Problem is, it needs to be notarized, and I don't believe there's a notary here, so we would need one planning board member to come tomorrow, or whenever.
Does someone have a voluntary?
Sign a notarizing saying that all of these persons are who they are.
What is tomorrow, Tuesday?
So we're open until seven.
Yeah.
And there's a notary there till seven?
Yeah.
I would assume somebody in town has a notary.
Okay.
I hope.
Is anyone?
Clerk says a notary.
They are, Connor, Connor's a notary.
Conner's.
Because I have to come get sworn in tomorrow anyway, if I can come in the evening.
Elaine's a notary too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would be greatly appreciated.
Okay, so we'll do. Only one of us needs to come in tomorrow? Right.
So, so everyone has to sign it, or I guess Deb, five people don't sign it, um, but then somebody needs to come in and just.
Okay, sign it in front of a test that it was.
Five first, give these steps.
I can go tomorrow after the evening, so I'll mirror that down.
Um, yeah?
Two other things on the agenda, I don't know if we wanna go over the minor amendment.
Okay, where else? Can I give you a call tomorrow?
Yeah.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Yes.
Do today, or anything?
Yes.
I just didn't know.
Yes, I do really fast, but.
I think so.
What I wanna say, um, is that Gary and John and I are gonna just shoot this out there, and if people have thoughts, they can, uh, funnel them straight to me or to John. Both John and I, um, are going to attempt a new process to see if we can drive some efficiencies. And that is, we're gonna start, um, posting all the hearings at seven thirty and adopt that, that methodology, at least try it for three months to see if it helps us. And, um, more than that. What I wanna say, um, is that Gary and John and I are gonna just shoot this out there, and if people have thoughts, they can, uh, funnel them straight to me or to John, both, John and I, um, are going to attempt a new process to see if we can drive some efficiencies, and that is, we're gonna start, um, posting all the hearings at seven thirty and adopt that, that methodology, and at least try it for three months to see if it helps us, and, um, more than that, um, Gary's gonna help keep us, um, on task. So if you hear him moving the agenda and times and so forth, take no offense, we're gonna try and, um, drive a more efficient process.
So, I'm sorry, I missed the first part of that, starting at seven thirty.
We are gonna post the hearings all for seven thirty so that we can be more fluid and.
But there'll be a order as.
Oh, post them for seven thirty, okay.
Yes, but we will have an agenda posted and, and try to adhere to it, but then if we have people who, um, continue and don't show up, we can utilize the time more efficiently.
Right, that's a good idea. Who don't show up.
It also just saves us that process of, I'm gonna open the hearing, continue the hearing, it's kind of flip back and forth, and so, so we'll even have target times for discussion, and we'll be fairly upfront that, you know, our intent is to spend approximately one hour on this topic.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
So will we just open all the hearings one, back to back at seven thirty, open one, two, three?
Yep, we're gonna open all the hearings for the night, yep, exactly, yep. Um, and then, um, and definitely provide feedback as we go forward with the new process to see how it's working, if there's ways to make it work better.
Sounds great.
I'm kinda shy.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're so shy, so shy. Okay, um, I just wanna, go ahead.
Just one more thing on that, Mary, I'll too, and I, I think, if people have other ideas for how we can be more efficient, um, please sh, share them with us, I mean, I think, I think.
Air conditioning.
What's that?
Air conditioning. Sorry, got it.
But you know, we weren't more efficient when we didn't have the, the hot room in here, so, but I, I just, in, in, in general, I think that, that just with the, the staff we have, we all put a lot of time into this, um, and, you know, I know personally, I feel like, like I think that that's, that's an area for us to, I like how we operate as a board, but I think there's some, some opportunities for us to improve from the efficiency perspective, that'll serve the public well, I think it'll serve us well, and I think it'll turn, it'll, it'll serve our staff also.
Yeah, and I, I candidly kinda zoned out, Gary, so I'm sorry, but did you also say, so this hopefully allows us in, in, with more, um, fluency in the process, to be able to get farther and have less repetition of hearings as well, we're hoping, right? So we don't keep starting all over to repeat, um, to catch up and, and so forth.
The half-hour hearings are tough, we end up repeating.
But we don't, we also, we definitely don't wanna lose people's participation and people's vibrancy and that whole thing, but we do wanna, you know, try to grind through the material, if there's a way, more efficiently for everybody.
Well, I think it is good, like we did tonight, vote on some of the waivers now, so we don't keep discussing the waivers at each meeting and not just, just decide.
Yeah. Right, yeah.
It was really helpful, and it gave some very good direction to them.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, good, that's good feedback, so if we have, uh, it's, it's hard, you have a big, long list of, um, waivers, that kind of, that kind of sits wrong for me a little bit, just to, to start with anyway, it's just a bit more challenging, um, conceptually. Um, okay, so Haynes Farm Bond Release, two minutes or less?
So, they, they requested that their bond be released, um, it's constructed, it's four houses, uh, it's on Hayden Row, Ash Street.
Yeah.
That's super close, Dave.
That's like, that's been bugging me for, since last Tuesday, I'm like.
We walked past it today, and I was like.
Where is this four new houses on Hayden Row?
Anyway.
I know.
That was my fault. Um, we received a confirmation letter from Luckner stating that the as-built plan was received and the project was constructed, constructed as approved, pretty straightforward.
Well, that was the pictures that we had in the package, yeah, okay.
Yes.
The little side street.
Yep.
Any questions, any comments? I'll entertain a motion to release the bond, release.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, Highland Park, oh, we did that, what was the other thing? Oh, the minor amendments. Do we feel like we can do that? I feel like I can vote on the, these minor amendments, but how does everybody else feel on the Chamberland Wayland? I had the opportunity to talk about it at length be, before our first meeting. It is, so the, just, just for the public, minor amendments to the Chamberland Wayland special permit conditions mean that they have an extra amount of time, the first two units would have to be delivered after twenty-one building permits, is that right? Or all three of them?
No.
No, two, I'm sorry, I made a hash of that.
Two at twenty-one months and the third at thirty-one months.
Twenty-one units.
Units, and the third at thirty-one units, yes, yes, and, um, and John, as the principal planner, would be the, um, functional approver.
Yeah.
Approver of location of units as the process plays out.
Yep.
All right, so.
There are criteria, I guess.
Yes, there are criteria, I saw that, thank you, yep.
And there will also be a timeframe.
Yep, and this is, um, just for, um, process to be quicker, A, because the real estate market is so hot, but also, none of us really want the task of going out and, and approving it with much of.
Is there some sort of contingency for a backup person for you, if you're on vacation or out sick?
No, so that was the time when we put ten days, because if I'm on a week-long vacation, I would assume it would be five days a day, so it could be two weekends, five days a day, and then a day.
Okay.
Um, and then if it's not approved within those ten day, or if it's not, no determination is made within those ten days, it's approved.
It's approved, okay.
Can we, can we just, can we have a backup, the planning board chair, in that, eventually, I mean, I don't think it matters?
We can, I guess the, the concern that I would have is, um, if, for some reason, they reach out to me, and I'm on a two-week vacation in the Crivlin, and they don't reach out to you, how, is that a coordination?
Will I know?
Isn't Elaine the backup? I mean, if something, if something comes, if something comes to the, to the, to the town planner, then, and you're out, or you're on leave or whatever.
Could they?
Yeah, that's a good idea, that's a better idea. Doesn't it hurt, where does it hurt?
Automatically forwarded to her, yeah.
No, it, no, they're not, get automatically forwarded.
No, if you're on vacation.
It should.
It could, I mean, I haven't been on vacation, so I don't know the process, usually it's just an outgoing message that says, I'm not here.
And contact so-and-so if you, if you're, if you have an urgent need.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It needs to say that.
I, I haven't had an away email yet, because I haven't left.
It should have somebody to contact, yeah.
It will, I guess.
I think the fact that it says principal planner and not a person's name is actually, you know, it answers my question, it really does, in a sense, have a backup, because it's whoever's functioning in that role.
Yeah.
You know, and if that temporarily means it's someone else in your, in your department, then I think that that covers it.
I could add a, a piece that says, um, for urgent issues, please. Or if the principal planner is not available, I guess.
Or designate.
I don't think.
Think about having two.
I, I, you know what, I, I think it's, I, I actually think, we're not gonna let you go on vacation, that's all.
That's all.
Yeah, there you go.
You know what, they, they could figure out, if there's something that much of a time crunch, like, guess what, either one of them's gonna escalate or call somebody else.
Yeah.
They'd figure it out.
Yeah, I was, I was just concerned about having two.
They for sure will.
Yeah.
I agree, they're very.
In the future, if there's another planning planner and there's conflicting opinions.
I agree.
Oh, go on, medical.
I think it's fine. All right, so as written in our packet?
As written.
Is the motion, go ahead.
I'd prefer to say principal planner, or they're designee, it's just so that if you had a medical leave for a month or something, that you could designate Elaine or someone else.
Okay, that's, that makes sense.
I don't know, that's.
That's fine.
Cause that.
Yeah, let's hope that doesn't happen, but that's fair. All right, or designate, he's gonna designate somebody, it'll be up to you. Um, okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions?
Almost there.
That's a no, yeah, that's an abstention, okay. I wanted to say, um, one more thing, that's a couple of things, so, um, I am, uh, coordinating a telephone meeting with the chair of the select board and the chair of the school committee, um, to just coordinate early, uh, about the steering committee role and our mission statement and our objectives for the growth study committee, just to make sure that, um, there is, um, early enthusiasm, buy-in, or we make some changes as we're establishing the committee at the outset. Um, and also, um, I would like to also add into that conversation, um, some sort of coordinated process for us to address the school bus issue at Legacy Farms North. Um, and, um, I'm also, I, I will at that point ask, um, the, um, select board to put it on their agenda perhaps, so we can talk about it, um, at a, a meeting coming up in the public. It seems, it seems to make sense that.
That issue is on our agenda for next meeting at seven o'clock.
The, um, the what?
The Legacy Farms bus issue.
Okay, so, new plan, um.
They can get off.
Yeah, no, um, no, we did that, because there's a time crunch, um, I can, I, I, I was thinking, I'm, I'm still gonna talk to them, um, in that, that three-way conversation about it, because I think it makes sense for us to coordinate, um, but I'm gonna go to their open, uh, mic night tomorrow, uh, and just, uh, introduce it, let them know that we're gonna be talking about it, um, and ask them to keep it on their, uh, agen, you know, put it on their agenda, so we get talking about it sooner rather than later, unless people have objections to that approach. Oh, look at him, good.
So.
Second. He said so moved, I said second.
Do we need to vote on it?
You don't have to.
No, I said so.
This is me, this is me positing, uh, some way to get this conversation going on the three.
Can I applaud your effort?
Seems.
I, I guess my only thing, I, I'm just sensitive to committing, I, I'm not totally convinced that it's, it's our issue to deal with, and I'm just sensitive to schedules and, and, and making sure that we get to the things that, that I think that we are at least fully responsible for, so, that's all.
Fair enough.
I just ask if we.
Fair enough, I think that we have to identify who is responsible and how to go forward.
Whatever part of the select board's agenda?
I'm gonna ask them, I'm gonna ask them.
But, but I like the idea of when you're meeting with, with the chair of the select board and the chair of the school committee, I think that's a worthwhile topic to figure that out, because I, I do think it's important to figure out where this resides, and if, if, if the decision is that's with the planning board, then, then, okay, um, I'm fine taking that up, I'm just, my personal opinion, I.
But I think the funding, I think the funding and the conversation is gonna end up more in the school committee's lap.
Anyway, we gotta go, um, but just so you know that, that those conversations are happening, so the public is noticed and you are noticed, and, uh, we will report back.
And you got everything off your finger?
Yeah, do you like how I do that? I learned that in grad school.
I'm gonna wait to say.
Motion to adjourn.
Right, okay.
Yes.
One more point of order.
Wait, wait, wait.
Since we did set hearing time for the things for next meeting.
Oh, you don't have to sign, right?
Yes.
I'll post the agenda as I have to be.
Yes. August twelfth is the first agenda where we have the new system going.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
And Dave is on the new trails committee, right?
Yes.
The new trails committee?
Yes.
At a future meeting, can we discuss how trails committee can review, like, this project, the Whisper Way has trails in it, and it would be good if the trails committee gave a feedback.
We actually need to make appointments next meeting, as well, I think that one's coming up.
Oh, okay. Okay, so we can discuss it then.
Wasn't I already appointed?
I think so.
But we, we asked him if he would take it up.
You know what, you know what, it should have, the notarization on the trails committee.
You can have a motion on the table?
I've been appointed last week.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think maybe.
Second.
Hey, and one of us.
Did we, did we go to adjourn?
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.